Aparecen en pantalla y el número de Google es el siguiente. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Y a continuación, por favor, introduzca la siguiente clave. Seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, almohadilla. Queremos recordar a la gente que llame, que hable despacio, por favor. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. President Lam, that concludes our services for translation.
Thank you. I call the special meeting of June twenty second, twenty twenty-two to order. We'll call Mr. Steele.
Student delegate Hanson.
Here.
Student delegate Konosha.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Vice President Bogus.
Here.
Commissioner Shu.
Here.
President Lam.
Here.
Commissioner Mutamidi.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. As a reminder, you must have a seat to remain in the boardroom. If you do, each individual must have a seat, and if not, you're welcome to stay in the overflow in the lobby area. So just wanted to make that announcement. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's special board meeting. I want to clearly lay out the format for tonight's meeting and the expectations that we're holding ourselves to as a board. This might look, feel a little bit different from how our meetings have run in the past, but we are going to follow a similar format as we did last week. And this is an example of how we're continuously improving as a board. So tonight, we have three items of Special Order of Business as well as three discussion items. Before our discussion and vote on the resolutions, we will hold public comment. I will be holding public comment at this time for one hour for items one and two. We will take those public comment together before we will be voting on tonight. I'm sorry. Thank you. Items two and three. Thank you, Commissioner Shu. Each public commenter will have one minute to speak. And this is, we will also be taking public comment both in person and virtually. For context, at the June sixteenth board meeting, we had over two hours of public comment on two of tonight's resolutions. We have also received hundreds of emails which board members have read. On behalf of my board colleagues, thank you to everyone who submitted your thoughtful input. After we've heard public comment, we will address each of the, we will address the resolutions again, items two and three together, and we're going to use the following protocol. I will ask if any commissioners have clarifying questions for Superintendent Matthews and his team about the resolution. Clarifying questions are questions that attempt to eliminate or prevent any misunderstanding, confusion, or ambiguity about the resolution. If commissioners pose anything other than clarifying comments, I will respectfully ask them to seize their comment as there will be an opportunity for commissioners to have personal time for uninterrupted time to speak. Following after clarifying questions, each commissioner will have two uninterrupted minutes to speak on anything related to items, resolutions, two and three being considered. And again, commissioners may discuss what their position is or why, questions they might have, concerns that they have. This approach and time limit ensures that all commissioners have an equal opportunity to share their perspectives. Commissioners, please adhere to the time limit. Commissioner Vice President Bogus will keep time. And this evening, actually, we're gonna, I'll keep time for you first because we're gonna actually go to the right of me for the initial comments from commissioners. And after our first round, if the majority of commissioners want to have another round of time, we can do so. And then following that, we will move to a vote. And we'll repeat that process also for, and I'll go through that process for Special Order of Business four when we get there. Just as the board commits to be caving with decorum and maintaining a productive dialogue, we hold our fellow San Franciscans to the same standard. And I ask that anyone disrupting the meeting will be removed. So it is again with the utmost importance to maintain the decorum and respect that I hold, we hold in this boardroom. And for my commissioners, I like to repeat what I shared at our last board meeting last week as well as our coach, our board coach has shared with us that culture matters. And the more that we all conduct ourselves as a team, the greater the likelihood that we'll be able to create the conditions for improved student outcomes and how we move forward as a school district. But being a team is not synonymous with agreeing on everything. And we know that we respect one another with our differing perspectives and that it takes a high degree of personal maturity to be on a side that may be on a split vote and still respect one another as teammates. And to publicly make it clear that even though we may arrive differently at policy positions and our votes, that it again is the collective of the board and to stand with our policy decisions. And it is with the support of your, our ability, your ability as commissioners to be effective as a board member and us collectively as a board. So at this time, we will move into Special Order of Business. I do need to ask for, may I have a motion in a second? To suspend the rules for Special Order of Business, items two to four.
Second.
We'll call Mr. Steele.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu.
Yes.
Commissioner Mutamidi.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
President Lam.
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. At this time, we will move items two and three together for public comment, which is items two, two, five, two, four, SP one, the amended superintendent's resolution to form a task force to provide community and foreign recommendations to improve district high schools, as well as item number three, two, two, five, two, four, SP two, superintendent's resolution to extend the interim low admissions policy for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I call on Superintendent Matthews to read the recommendations into the record.
Thank you, President Lam. So the two resolutions that are coming forward are, the first one is the amended superintendent's resolution to form a task force to provide community informed recommendations to improve district high schools. This is resolution two, two, five, dash, two, four, SP one. The, the second resolution is resolution two, two, five, two, four, SP two, and that's the superintendent's resolution to extend the interim low admissions policy for the twenty-two-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. I see folks lining up already. Again, I ask to please keep the side conversations so that the board can provide their attention to public comment and the public commenter. Mr. Steele, you can please begin with public comment. Each public comment will be one minute each.
Sure thing. And I apologize if I missed it. Did you move these items already? Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll be doing one minute each. You'll see the count on there so you can wrap up your comments when it starts to wind down. Yes, can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Queremos recordarles que tienen un minuto de comentario público. Pueden ver el contador más aquí al lado de la pantalla. De nuevo, tienen un minuto. Gracias.
Thank you. Please begin with your first and last thing. Thank you.
他们请在你讲之前先讲你的姓名，先至发表你的意见。多谢，thank you.
Y por favor, digan su nombre y apellidos. Gracias.
Hi, everyone. My name is Siobhan Heinz Foster. I'm just here today. I didn't plan on speaking at all. I knew a former alum who planned to rally today in support of merit-based admissions. And I feel like as a former student delegate, everyone pretty much knows my position, so I'm not even gonna speak on that. I'm gonna speak on what I saw today. Outside was complete utter chaos. People yelling at each other, literally angry, not even at the fact of the issue at hand, the fact that people just being there. And it was just so disgusting to see as someone who's young, seeing people just acting this way and just go at it with each other is purely disgusting. And I think another crazy part about it is no one's paying attention to what's happening outside. There was no security outside. And the security guards inside just watched as people just argued and bickered with themselves outside. So I was harassed on this board numerous times.
Thank you.
And nobody did it.
Thank you.
Y'all need to do something about what's happening outside.
Thank you.
Before we start, again, audience, I'm asking for the same type of decorum that the commissioners are displaying, that that is respected for our public commenters.
Can you reset the time for this?
Thank you. My name is Kid Lam. I have two students in the district. When SFUSD was sued for violation of Bang Act regarding low admission change in April two thousand and eleven, the district knew there was a possibility for you to lose the lawsuit, but there was no, no contingency plan to restore merit-based system. In October two thousand and twenty-one, and the court ordered SFUSD to restore the merit base, but superintendent said there was no time to implement the merit-based system. Now, Dr. Matthews wants to extend Lowell to another year of lottery. It will affect eighth grade students who apply for twenty-three to twenty-four school year. SFUSD and the school board should not destroy something that is working for so many students for years. Lowell provides an external education to driven students of low races and families who cannot afford private school tuition. Stop using Lowell as scapegoat. Merit is not racist. I repeat, no, merit is not racist. Today, I urge the Board of Education Commissioners to be honest with the community and vote no, not to, not to restore Lowell, not to put Lowell into lottery. Voters will remember. Thank you.
Translation.
Hi, my name is, I am Lisa Shu. I live in San Francisco. I support Lowell's merit-based admissions. Merit-based admission is good for everyone. The United States is a democracy, and in front of everyone, everyone is in, in front of everyone, everyone is equal. There is no reason, no substitute to change the merit-based system. I hope the seven commissioners and superintendent listen to the people. I am finished.
Good. Thank you. Members of the board, my name is Terry Hong, and I was born and raised in San Francisco. I know how great the SFUSD system can be because I went to public schools, including Lowell High. My immigrant parents taught me a basic life lesson. If you put in the time, play by the rules, you could expect to do reasonably well in your educational experience. However, I'm reluctant to teach that same lesson to my two sons, who are going to district schools right now. Why? Because the deck is stacked against them, because the rules have changed. And the school board back in twenty-twenty changed the rules. So we changed the makeup of the school board. Now you all have the opportunity to allow Lowell's previous admission system to be reinstated. You have the chance to demonstrate that merit is not a four-letter word. Thank you.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Jessie, or Jessie Yu. I graduated from Lowell last year. I'm just here to express my full support of the lottery system. As a recent grad, I am really excited and really proud of what the lottery system means for the future of Lowell, and I'm really excited to see this board implement more measures and more efforts to make Lowell a more inclusive space for all. I think the person before me mentioned that the rules are changing, and I agree, the rules are changing, and they need to change in order to support and uplift all students. The school, the school district, the city is not supportive of Black and Brown students, and we need to make a bigger effort to do that. I think speaking on the rally that happened earlier, I'm really embarrassed and disappointed that this is the way that you've chosen to represent your cause. I think that it's almost comparable to how my, like, five-year-old brother behaved, refusing to listen to other people and yelling at other kids. Yeah, I'm just really disappointed, and as grown adults, you should do better.
Hi, everyone. My name is Victoria, and I just wanted to say how I feel like the test is just underlining issues in the community, and all it does is create a toxic learning space and give the kids a sense of entitlement to do whatever they want because they've had a lot of racist outbreaks and a lot of rape cases, and the staff has done nothing. There has been student-led walkouts, but as far as the staff, nothing. And I feel like it's pretty interesting that you guys would like to focus on lottery tests versus what's really happening in the schools and affecting the students. And there's people of color here, and I know that as being Black, you know that it's not fair. And the test should definitely not still go on when you know how it affects our Black and Brown babies. So that's all I have to say.
So good evening, board commissioners, Dr. Matthews. I'm here once again. It's almost frustrating to have to keep coming out here and advocate on behalf of our babies. When do our babies matter? Political seats is not important when it comes to our babies, right? You guys are here to represent for our babies. That's your current job right now. Future political aspirations should not be determining factor in the decisions that you make. All these veiled threats should indicate to you that there is a problem with this merit-based system. You shouldn't have to be frightened into voting for something that was wrong and created a racist situation. When you have babies asking other babies, how did you get here? Are you a band two or band three kid? That tells you it's wrong. Why do we have to keep coming here? Please be bold and courageous. Stand up for our babies. Because like I said, we vote too, and our votes matter too. Stop being afraid. Do what's right for our babies. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Virginia Marshall on behalf of the NAACP and the San Francisco Alliance of Black School Educators. Say it loud. I'm Black and I'm proud. That's what I've taught my grandchildren, one of whom is with me today. Sixty-one years ago, the NAACP sued the district so that Chinese students could come to the new Lowell High School, where it's currently located today. Today, we're here begging you, pleading with you to be bold and vote to keep the lottery system. The lottery system means that Lowell is diverse. It is not a private, it's not a public private school. It is not just for one ethnic group. It is not just for one ethnic group. It's for all the students who choose to make Lowell their home. So be bold, do the right thing, especially for African-American and Latino students. Thank you so much.
My name is Rex Ridgeway. And ten years ago, I was in this El Dorado Elementary School reading to Black and Brown kids. And here it is, two thousand and seventeen, Cal Matters wrote a story that says San Francisco is the worst county for Black students' achievement. This was two thousand and twelve, that was two thousand and seventeen. Now, here we are, two thousand and twenty, and Black and Brown kids across this city are still not prepared for the rigorous work that a Lowell or a Lincoln or, or will require. So I am for putting the merit back because twenty-five percent of the kids of this freshman class got Ds and Fs. If twenty-five percent of the airlines fell out of the sky, you wouldn't fly it. You would close it down. I'm saying the same thing. You're gonna have another roll-in with the same results that's fixed the elementary and middle schools in the Bayview so they will be prepared.
Hey, guys, I'm FaceAllMemen, and the current state of Lowell, as I see it, is it's an academically advanced school with the random student selection, a random admission process. And to me, this doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, and I think that can be evidenced by the three X increase in the failure rate, three times many students failed, as did before. So my request to you guys is either to restore the merit, to reduce the failure rate, or if you really just don't like Lowell that much, why even have it? Just have it be like any other high school because just having random admissions to an academically advanced school, it just doesn't, doesn't add up. I don't think it's helping anyone, and I think it's really hurting everyone. Thanks, guys.
Can you restate your name? Sir, can you restate your name?
FaceAllMemen. Thanks.
Hello. Hi, my name is Selena Chu. I'm a parent of SFUSD. And thank you so much for mentioning the, I didn't call it chaos, I call it freedom of speech outside. We were having a rally, and people just stepped in and tried to push us out. So this is so much. Thank you for doing that. And also, I wanted to let you see this room. This is the environment that you have created, a toxic SFUSD picking on race. The Black and the Brown and the Asians? This is not that. The merit system we have, it was equitable. It was, it did not come with a color. We understand in every race, there are poor people, there are rich people. So it's not, our skin color do not determine our intelligence. Rex also said it. His, his granddaughter was, you know, worked hard because she knew. So it's not about color.
Thank you.
Okay. My name's Michelle Quach. Instead of trying to dismantle one of the top high schools in the nation, the BOE should be focusing on improving every single school, starting from grade school. Lottery does not work, as seen in the numbers of kids who can read and write at grade level and the Ds and Fs. I'm not here to shame the students. I'm here to state facts. They're not pretty, but they're facts. There, there are seven point three percent of African-American and thirty point one percent of Asian students in SFUSD. It's obvious there are more Asians at Lowell because of the disproportionate amount of Asian families living here. Voting for merit-based admissions and rewarding excellence does not mean you're against equality. We can aim to do both. Two things can be equally true. Let's do the hard work to uplift all of our students. Let's not put races against each other. Don't say you're fighting to desegregate when one group is adversely affected by your decision. The Chinese Exclusion Act, Japanese internment, and so many more. This BOE experiment has failed.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Rabbi Dr. Catherine. My name is Rabbi Dr. Sophia Catherine Woodley von Rushchild, and I'm here to say, you know, Martin Luther King told us one thing, the importance of the content of our character. Also, my parents taught me the importance of hard work. We should go back to a system that rewards hard work and dedication and not punish it. Under the three-brand merit inequality-based admission system, Lowell was number one in California. After switching to the latter system, everything went haywire. We know people get, who get Ds and Fs have increased threefold. Obviously, the latter system is failing. You don't keep something that's failing. You get rid of it and replace it with something that worked, which means merit-based. It's not about race. It's not about politics. As we say, facts don't care about your feelings. Merit system work.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Chan. I'm an SFUSD K through twelve alumni and SFUSD parent. I'm asking for the board to restore trust and to act in good faith by restoring merit-based admissions at Lowell. This is a deceitful resolution to extend lottery admissions for a purported third consecutive temporary year. It was introduced six months late, and in last Thursday's meeting, the superintendent circuitously blamed his own leadership team for his lateness. Moves such as these destroy trust and is not acting in good faith. Please restore Lowell's three-band admissions process. As our board president just stated to us, culture matters. If you base decisions on data and facts, you'll clean up the mess from the past, and we'll finally have a school district that's focused on student outcomes. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, good evening. My name is Leanna Louie. And I'm a parent with a student at Washington High School. Just want to say that over sixty years ago, Dr. Martin Luther King says, judge not by the color of my skin, but by the content of my character. And today, I want to say to the Board of Education that I ask you not to admit students by the color of their skin. I don't care what color they are, but by the merit that they show us. Hard-working students deserve a space at Lowell. I am not a Lowell graduate, and none of my kids attended Lowell. It doesn't matter. I still support the students who worked hard and made it into Lowell. And I would like you to say no to lottery admissions and restore the merit-based admissions to Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry, I'm not beautiful in English. I'm speak Chinese miserly, okay? I'm pleased my friends, translator.
I'm glad to be here to speak with the officials and the public regarding this matter on Lowell High School. Lowell High School has a history of over a hundred years of wonderful teachings at this school. And instead of trying to change the system, we should be spending more funds in growing a school and making it better and admit more students to this school. It's very important that the government funds Lowell to the fullest and continue to extend it. And if needed, I would love to organize for the Asian community to bring some funding in to support expansion of Lowell High School.
That's your time. Do your translation.
She said that America is a beautiful country. This is a country for everyone. It is for you and it's for me. And we would love to work together with everyone to make things better and to expand Lowell High School. But she also supports no lottery and yes, a merit-based admissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you start my time, I just want to ask the legal counsel a quick question around process, because there was no open general comment time for non-agenda items. And I did have some questions that are gonna end up pertaining to this in terms of process, so.
This is not, this is not a regular board meeting. This is a special board meeting, so there is no general public comment time. There's only comment on items on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So first, I'd just like to say that I oppose the creation of the task force, which seeks to basically continue to marginalize the Black community. In the amended resolution presented by President Lamb, they purposely left out the name of the resolution, which is Resolution Number 212A, in response to ongoing pervasive systemic racism at Lowell High School. And that this actual commission that's being created seeks to find another way of creating another merit-based system. We're here today because this is historically a pattern of the district continuing to pass anti-Black and anti-poor policies that disproportionately impact the most vulnerable people in this community. And when you're talking about right now, the Biden-Harris administration stating specifically to this district and to districts across the country that equity should be prioritized, and that you're not doing that today and you're actually doing the opposite, it's actually disgusting. And I wouldn't be surprised if you lose federal funding behind this.
Good evening. I'm Roger Wong, two kids in a district. First, I want to give two students, Delic gets a lot of credit, two rational, mature student voices. The future of education and leadership, bravo. I'm tired of things being so black and white. We need to focus on the grays, the nuances, have some balance. Look at education holistically. Stop focusing on Lowell. We need addition, addition of different pathways. Keep our specialty programs, art, music, accelerated learning, language immersion, and more technical-based pathways. Learning for each student is different. Don't be subtractive, be positive. Keep the assets, fix the liabilities. Merit and equity are not mutually exclusive. We can do both. Lowell is the middle of the diversity index, and equity is about opening doors, providing opportunities. The three-band system opens doors, help more through those doors. Provide more early prep and support, it happens K to eight. Education is not given, it requires participation, it requires hard work from all. We must monitor true positive outcomes in learning, not performative ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Murphy. I'm sick of hearing about Lowell. It takes up all the oxygen in the room. For many, it's the only SFUSD school people care about. It's a public school, a public good. I'm sick of antiquated ideas about what a Lowell student is. Antiquated ideas of standardized testing and grades. I'm sick of antiquated ideas about disabled students and what they can and cannot contribute to a school. Rewarding hard work? Kids with IEPs work hard and achieve excellence. Private schools discriminate against children with disabilities. Public schools should not. It's morally wrong. Look at the numbers. How many Lowell students came from private middle schools that are inaccessible to disabled students? The district yet again is vulnerable to lawsuits. And I would just want to clarify, I'm on the CAC, but I'm talking from myself. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jay Lau. Under the three-band admissions system, Lowell has changed many lives for students from low-income families, as Lowell can help those that want the best education without being forced to pay for a private school. Because Lowell offers a rigorous and a hard system that strives for academics, the students that enroll at Lowell should be the ones that choose to, no matter their culture. Please reject the lottery. I do hate the division that is happening, and I do feel like it's a distraction from deeper issues regarding the treatment of teachers, quality of education, and funding. We need to make the system better for all students.
Hello, my name is Carrie. I'm an SFUSD teacher and parent. Here are some facts. It is not legal for you to remove the lottery from Lowell. It is against California Ed Code. Lowell is a comprehensive high school. How many times does our school district have to be sued for discriminatory practices? Here are some other facts. Lottery-based admissions helped low-income students, Latinx students, students with IEPs, Vietnamese students, Chinese students with IEPs, Chinese students who are English learners, English-language learners, and Black students. It bought the freshman student body closer to representing student makeup in the district. If Lowell is so wonderful, every student deserves access under California law.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Paulina Hare. I was a proponent of the school board recall. I'm a former SFUSD student, and I have also taught in the district. I'll just come out and say right now, Lowell is not anti-student with IEPs. There's actually the ability for these students to get into Lowell. And I will also come out and say that I did not go to Lowell. I went to Washington, and there's nothing wrong with that. However, it would be selfish of me to then deny the opportunity to go to Lowell to the students that qualify and need to be in that environment for them to succeed, which includes, you know, a student that is very dear to me, my partner's son, who happens actually to be biracial, part Black. He would thrive in merit-based Lowell, and merit-based is not racist. And we need him to have that opportunity. So I encourage you commissioners to please reinstate merit at Lowell. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Trisvenia, past president of Lowell High School Alumni Association. And my San Francisco public school education prepared me to go into public service. I was President Obama's Assistant Secretary for Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity. I'm used to standing with Urban League, used to standing with NAACP, used to be standing with LULAC and many organizations. This is, Lowell has always been controversial. If you go back to 1961, the Chronicle article, "The Lowell High Debate Rages." But at that time, coming before the school board was Cecil Poehl, the first African-American United States attorney anywhere in the country, on behalf of the NAACP, saying Lowell should have stringent academic requirements. Coming before the school board, Terry Francois, on behalf of the NAACP, the first African-American member of the Board of Supervisors of San Francisco, also calling for Lowell to be an all-academic high school. And Cipriano Salazar, representing the community services organization, Chisela Chavez's Group, on behalf of Latinos, saying equal opportunity is critical for all communities. So continue.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening commissioners. My name is Lily Ho. I am a Lowell High School graduate student. But I will admit to you that, you know, I don't necessarily believe that a merit-based system is necessary at SFUSD. However, I don't think that we can have that conversation until we prepare all of our young people to be able to go to a strenuous academically-oriented school, high school. Ideally, all high schools in San Francisco should offer all of the opportunities that Lowell offers. That is the ideal system. And I think you guys are focusing on the wrong things. You want to talk about equality and equity? Well, you should focus on the fact that you have elementary schools at SFUSD where the reading levels are at 8% and 11%. If you want to help Black and Brown kids succeed in life, make sure they can read and write. That's where you guys should be focusing. I think it's so ridiculous and so disingenuous that you put so much effort on this one school, which, by the way, I feel like encourages a lot of race-baiting.
Translation?
My name is Annie. I support merit-based admissions. I hope all students have a good place to learn and read. Thank you.
My name is Nathan Chow. I'm a student of SFUSD. Listen to the students, listen to the families, listen to the people, listen to the court. Do the right thing. Vote no on lottery.
All right. My name is Gary. Lowell prepares students to be well-rounded leaders, as well as prepare them for college, ready for career, and ready for life. They want to go to Lowell, but this lottery system denies them, thus limiting access to educational opportunities. Please listen to students and support a merit-based system. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Winnie.
Hold on, please.
I'm sorry, can we let the translator go, please?
Okay. Oh, yeah. No, no quantity but quality. Every student deserves a good place to excel. I think we, please, vote no to the lottery system. We should encourage the kids to excel and to work hard. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Winnie Feng. I strongly believe that hard-working students deserve to get into the Lowell merit-based admission. And I have an example. I have a granddaughter. She has reading problem, she has math problem, and she going to high school pretty soon. If she got Lato, do you think, you know, that will affect her? She may have bad feeling she's not able to make it in the class. So it's not good when people are not working hard, not doing a good job, you know, make it to Lowell standard. It's hard for the student. That will damage the self-esteem. That will pull up other students from higher level to down. So I please, I really, really support to restore Lowell, please restore Lowell-based admissions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mayna Yang. I'm a Mission High School alumni, and I am a parent of two Lowell alumnis. I'm here because I heard that the way it's done for Lowell lottery system is not correct, it's illegal. So you need to go back to the legal way, and that was the merit base. It was working well. It provides an opportunity for kids who are into realizing or excelling in their academic potentials. And you can establish schools for other potentials as well. And, you know, that would be the great way of encouraging students to do their best. And so please go back to the merit base for students who would like to go to Lowell to realize their academic potentials. Thank you.
At this time, we've reached our thirty minutes of in-person public comment. I am going to extend it to the last person that's currently in line. We will then extend it the same time for virtual public comment. So the last person in line right now is going to be the last speaker of in-person public comment.
My name is Win Chu. I am a student of SFUSD. I'm with CPAC. Under the third-band merit and equity-based admissions, Lowell offered a rigorous curriculum to drive students to learn. Many students do their best if they are driven. Lowell pushes for academic excellence. Reject the lottery. Thank you.
My name is Jason Tan. I am a student of SFUSD. I am with CPAC. More than 50% of SF high school applicants put Lowell and Lincoln as their first preference. That means Lowell is requested by as many as 25% high school applicants in our school district. Respect student demand. Vote no to the lottery. Thank you.
I'm Andrew Chan, and I'm a student of SFUSD. I am with CPAC. Under the three-band merit and equity-based admissions, Lowell offered a rigorous curriculum to drive students to learn. Many students do their best if they are driven. Lowell pushes for academic excellence. Reject the lottery.
My name is Wilson Tan. I'm a student of SFUSD. I currently go to George Washington High School, and I'm with CPAC. Under the three-band merit and equity-based admissions, Lowell offered an abundant curriculum for the talented and gifted students, for the appetite for more content. Help us reject the lottery and restore the three-band merit and equity-based admissions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sobi Lee. I am a current student of SFUSD, and I'm with CPAC. Lowell three-band merit system and equity-based system gives a student a reason, a goal for them. We became better because we had the goal. We drive for success. And this, and this three-band merit system and equity base helps students try for success in their early life. Building habits when you're young will last a lifetime. And with this three-band merit system, it will help them go into a good college, go into a possibly Ivy League school. It will help them with anything that they would need in life, because they have this habit of working hard. And with this three-band merit system and equity base, it will help them build this habit of working hard, working hard every single day, so that they can reach their goals. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gloria, I'm Massachusetts. I'm a parent in this Unified with a child at Wallenberg and at Harvey Milk. I've also educated in the city since 1997. I worked at John Swett, a wonderful arts magnet school. I worked at Spring Valley, our oldest elementary school in the state of 170 years. And I know Lowell has a really rich history. And tonight, what I came to say, and I'll try to get it in in one minute, but I learned tonight from sitting next to neighbors here, that Lowell started in the Fillmore District. tonight from sitting next to neighbors here that Lowell started in the Fillmore District and was moved to avoid desegregation. Lowell has a long, I learned from a wonderful neighbor sitting next to me that her family attended Lowell and had many wonderful opportunities, and for that, I'm so happy. And I feel sad to see a sign that says that SF is the face of Asian hate that stuns me to my core, because I would love to see the lottery stay in order to bring diversity to an academic strength school.
My name is Erin Dumas. I'm a parent in the district. The lottery is working. In one year, the data bears out that Lowell is being desegregated. If this district's universal goals are access and equity, then we must stay the course. This policy is working. Meritocracy does nothing but take us backwards and perpetuate the idea that some students deserve more than others. The things I've heard and seen here today reiterate the need for the Equity Audit and Action Committee, which is on indefinite hold, which pains me as a member. This new proposed task force is a separate but equal version of this existing committee that we already have. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sam Mo.
Hi, I am a parent with a 10-year-old child who's at a public school in Unified School District. I'm translating from. Okay. Oh, and he basically says that his daughter is looking forward to going to Lowell because this is her target school. It makes her want to work harder every day to achieve goals. And he's encouraging all the board members to vote no on the lottery admissions and restore the merit-based admissions immediately. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna, and I'm with CPAC. The three-band merit-based system for Lowell has been working. Please try not to dismantle Lowell by suing the lottery. Please vote no to lottery. Thank you.
Oh, hi, my name is He Dai, and I'm with CPAC.
Under the three-band admission system from Lowell, for decades, I think Lowell has changed life trajectory, even for students from the low-income immigrant family. Please reject the lottery. Thank you.
All right. Hello, my name is Leah McGeever. I came here straight from work to support the lottery system. In 2019, a lawsuit was brought on by largely Black and Hispanic students and advocacy groups against the University of California, which resulted in the UC system not continuing to use the SATs and ACTs, which its own regions have admitted are racist metrics. I think people here would agree that they think SATs and ACTs are merit-based. The lawsuit said that the college entrance tests are biased against poor and mainly Black and Hispanic students, and as by basing admissions decisions on those tests, the system illegally discriminates against applicants on the basis of their race, wealth, and disability. It sounds like a similar situation here, so this isn't just a San Francisco problem. I would also like to add that you can improve other schools while also improving equity and enacting anti-racist policies at Lowell. This isn't a false dichotomy. You can choose, you don't have to choose one goal over the other. You can do both at the same time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Lenenbach. I'm the attorney representing the Friends of Lowell Foundation. I've just handed Judson a packet that contains two documents. One is a letter with my letterhead on it, not very interesting. The more exciting packet is the one with original documents from 1996, where Valdemar Rojas, Superintendent of Schools, said that "we should aspire to ensure academic excellence and equity for all." That was the inspiration for the Lowell admissions policy that was approved by the federal court in 2001. We should not second-guess federal court district judges who already determined that the Lowell admissions policy complies with California law. We should also not second-guess Judge Schulman, who already determined that the Brown Act was violated and that the Lowell merit admissions policy is back in full force and effect. Do the right thing, follow the law, and reinstate merit admissions. It's already been done. You're too late. You had the opportunity, and you didn't do it for six months to explore other options. You're out of time, and so am I.
Thank you.
She had just said that the judge had already determined that lottery system is illegal, so follow the law. She says it is unfair for the people who work really hard and do well in school to not be able to get into Lowell. We should start teaching the students at elementary school and teach them well. Teach them good habits and teach them to work hard. Merit is fair. Society needs more people who are hardworking and cares about this community. Thank you. Oh, and no on lottery. Hi, my name is Lily. I have a child who just graduated from Lowell High School. I just met a neighbor, and we were sharing stories about our children going to Lowell High School. I'm very proud of my kids, and I want to thank Lowell High School for doing such a great job teaching my child. In one year, we have a lottery system which failed our students. 25% of the freshmen had grades of D and F. It is not very encouraging. This does not encourage students to work hard. Please support the merit-based system back to Lowell, because we need a better future for everyone. And you will go down in history as the
She should stop now, so you have time to translate.
I have two children. One graduated from Lowell and the other graduated from Lincoln High School. My daughter, who graduated from Lowell High School, wasn't sure about whether she wanted to attend Lowell High School in the beginning, but then she got in after application. And she said that after three years, she noticed that some people did not care about their schooling. Her friends that didn't get in did not care, and they haven't gone anywhere right now. I'm so glad and grateful to Lowell High School. And that my daughter now has graduated and earned a master's degree, and she's at MD right now. So I want to support the merit base and no to lottery.
SFUSD translator, can you go, please?
Yes, hello. The lottery has been used for two years, and this needs to stop. Before you go on to voting, please think about three questions. Think about three questions. After the lottery, so you see what happens. The school went from a top-tier to a second-tier school. This shows whether the school is good and bad, and this is not related to race. I'm not saying that we refuse race to stop students, but then you should look at the students at merit base and have the students attend by merit-based admissions. If the students do not reach their potential, then you need to think about how to improve elementary school, middle school, and high schools.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Forrest Liu, and I'm here once again because I have a problem with anti-Asian racism that's happening here. Last week, my comment that people think there are too many Asians at Lowell was dismissed. Dismissal is the biggest problem that we face when we face Asian racism. And I got a bigger problem when a white person tries to tell me what the definition of segregation is, what the definition of racism is. How would you know? How would you know? I looked at the history of Lowell, and there was a time when Chinese students had a hard time getting into Lowell's merit-based system because their English was not good. And guess what happened? Asian students studied hard, and now we're more than 50% of Lowell's student body population. That is something that should be celebrated. Not attacked! Merit is not segregation! Do not tell me what segregation means. You do not know as a white person. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tito, and I'm a parent of the district. And Lowell is the only school that is based on merit base in San Francisco. Please listen to the community, listen to the families. Please vote no to lottery. Thank you. Tell me about it, okay? Shame on you if you still vote yes on that thing. We should show no lottery, please.
Thank you.
My name is Sherry, and I wonder why we are here, what we are fighting for today. So crying babies always get the candies. Why would the silent babies get punished? Our kids work so hard and get punished. My granddaughter worked so hard, and she couldn't get into Lowell because of your lottery. So with one-year failing experience for your lottery system, what are you still waiting for? So vote no on the lottery system. Thank you.
President Lamb, that concludes in-person public comment.
At this time, I'll open up for virtual public comment.
Okay. Can you please? Whoa. Somebody has mics on. Please raise your hand if you care to speak public comment at this time on the Lowell items. Please raise your, and have that please repeated in Chinese and Spanish.
Larry Lee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Let me start my timer.
Yes, go ahead. We can hear you.
I really don't understand the pro-lottery for Lowell arguments, because I don't think the issue then Lowell would be mostly African-American or the majority at Lowell, whichever one would be fine, because straight A's and the highest test scores are colorblind, because they are just grades and numbers. I think the high achieving students just want to be with or sit next to other high achieving students. That was how students were in the seventies and eighties in honor classes, and I don't think human nature has changed that much. They are trying to make it racial when we're based on who has the highest test scores and grades. It makes no sense. Have they ever stopped and think how foolish they sound? Thank you, this is Larry Lee.
Thank you. Latoya Pitcher?
Thank you. Um, I would like to say thank you to the board for doing your due diligence and researching the history behind this. I would also like to say I completely understand why you would support merit-based admissions while I do not, because I understand that you have people to answer to, which they have done in these unveiled threats today. I find it abhorrent that you would even consider a merit-based system, one that is not based on grades and academics, but based on whether or not a racist panel likes that middle school that the child came from, or the racist panel feels that that family has enough income. The judge did not agree with the merit-based system, but he did say that that resolution two-one-two dash two A one was not properly noticed, and that was the only issue. So I find it abhorrent that you would try to sneak it in through the back door in such a way. I also think that you need to leave the task force alone. I understand you dismantled it because you don't want the racism and sexual abuse to come out, but that is your job. All I'm asking you to do is your job, and no, I'm not going to pay you like some of those political groups have. God bless you.
Thank you. Mark?
That's Mark Mosheim. I wanted to say I'm a district employee. I've just finished thirty-nine years teaching both at Lowell for four years and at Lincoln for thirty-one. My own kids went to Washington and Academy High Schools. So I've seen lots of different schools. I think that Lowell has, you know, an advantage in their offerings, of course. For instance, they do not, at Lincoln, there is no AP Chemistry. So I think it's really important that students who are prepared to take such classes are able to get into Lowell to take the classes. I'm in favor of the merit-based system for that reason. There are racist problems in all schools. I've seen them at Lincoln. I know there are problems at Lowell. I don't think going to a lottery system, continuing with lottery system is the answer to the racist problems. I think the board really has to work on all schools altogether. Lowell is closer to the city's demographics, the demographics at Lowell, than many other schools.
Thank you, thank you. Alene? Alene? Linda?
Hello, thank you very much, yes.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Jordan, I called on someone and it sounds like they're available now, so I'm gonna call on you next. One second, please.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Hi, my name is Alene. Yep. Hi, my name is Alene, born and raised in San Francisco and a product of SFUSD. I'm a mom of two preschoolers. I am calling in today to voice my support in keeping merit-based admissions at Lowell. My kids are only two and five, and the fact is, I have already started thinking whether to stay in SFUSD for middle and high school. This should be a huge problem for SFUSD. Why am I thinking about leaving? Because the job of the school district is to prepare our children for the rigors of our society. Like it or not, we live in a society based on competition. The message we need to send our children is while they need to be kind, they need to be prepared to compete. Given the primary problem we're facing is declining enrollment and therefore lower revenue, I strongly urge the school board to vote for policies that increase enrollment. Otherwise, you'll be losing seats and votes. I urge you to restore merit-based admissions.
Thank you, Alene. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, hello, I'm Linda Jordan with the San Francisco Alliance of Black School Educators. To President Lamb, Vice President Bogus, everyone on the dais, parents, students, and those in the boardroom. Please remember that merit base can equal separate but not equal. And that has been the case. No one is trying to dummy down Lowell. No one, and and what I'm hearing is I'm hearing people saying that other students who attend other schools and work hard are not quality students. They're only quality if they work hard at Lowell. We need to stop harming children that way. So we need to work on making sure that our elementary and middle schools prepare all students to go into whatever school they choose. And I am in favor of the lottery, and so is the Alliance of Black School Educators. We stand with the superintendent's Resolution One and Resolution Two, so that that could be an opportunity for any student who would like to attend Lowell to apply and to get in. And you know, it was always, it said earlier Lowell was the number one school in California. World News and US Report, they list a hundred high schools within the nation that are great. Lowell's not on it.
Thank you. Lisa?
Uh, yes, hi. My name is Lisa, and I am also a former SFUSD student. I'm here to ask you to not extend Lowell's admission, lottery admission policy for the following school year. Lowell represents the American dream. It's about personal responsibility and hard work that results in achievement and reward. It offers equality and opportunity to whoever wants to go there. For vigorous education and higher standard of learning, it is a pathway for those who want to achieve academically. Please vote no to extend a lottery policy and bring state Lowell's previous admission policy with three bans of admission. The previous admission policy celebrates merit while also extending a helping hand to some of those whose circumstances have prevented them from meeting the main admission criteria. In essence, it retains the core of the American dream, but provides an approach to assist those who are less fortunate. And I just want to say that for those who have said that Lowell is segregated or that is not diverse, it is absolutely diverse and a reflection of the city.
Thank you. Eva or Eva?
Thanks so much, Eva Crisanti. My mother attended Lowell in the nineteen fifties. She was one of two Chinese students in her class. The school was then mostly Jewish-American kids that she had to compete with. She was a refugee from war-torn China, and it was brutal. It was a brutal experience. Lowell has always had an element of classism, and it pains me to see Chinese-Americans used in this way to to work against their integration, and I think it's quite dangerous, actually. I think it's it's very easy to forget what it's like to be a minority in the city. And and I'm really worried that working-class Chinese, their voices are not being heard in this discussion. I don't think they feel comfortable being part of the clique that's dominating the discussion at this meeting. And I I think it's very unfortunate. There are a lot of Chinese-Americans who don't want their kids to go to Lowell, thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia, hold on. Please keep your side conversations or you will be asked to leave the boardroom.
Jeremy? 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 Gerald?
Yes, I'm sorry, you said Jeremy, I didn't realize you were asking for me. Before you start running the clock, President Lamb, I'd like to ask you if you received my email this morning along with the memo that was attached to it.
Jeremy, if you if you would like to give your comment, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, my my name's Jeremy Gribbler, and I'm a teacher at Lowell High School. I've taught at Lowell, I've taught math for the last eighteen years. I am appalled at the proposal by Superintendent Matthews to extend the current Lowell academic admissions policy. In his proposal, he mentioned systemic racism at Lowell High School as one reason. In my eighteen years as a teacher, I have neither practiced nor witnessed systemic racism. The source of the so-called racist padlet incident was never identified. Additionally, the other racist incident, graffiti written on a poster, was apparently written by a non-white student. Taken together, these incidents led to a feverish labeling of Lowell as racist by the school board and continues today in Dr. Matthews' resolution. Recently, the city Can I have a few more seconds?
If you could please wrap up your final thought.
Yeah, yeah. Recently, the city held a historic recall election whereby landslide majorities, the three commissioners who could be
That's all, thank you.
Okay.
Tom?
Hi, my name's Tom. My wife and I are both parents of a student in the district, and we're also teachers in the district. We're also special education teachers. I, it it's really odd to me how a lot of people are saying about the work hard. I work with special education students who work their damnedest, day in and day out, who because of disability may not make, when they go to middle school and high school, As, Bs, and all that, but doesn't mean they're smart. I even have teachers now who I work with who say, oh, so-and-so is smart. Everyone is smart, and everyone is capable. This is not the only school in the district. We need to stop thinking that it's Lowell a bust. I don't teach my son and my daughter that, okay, if you don't get to Lowell, you're not going to be anything. I went to a community college, I went to San Jose State, later got my masters and all that. I'm proud of myself where I got, but I know as a white male, right? I had a lot of privilege and I still do. So just because you didn't see racism doesn't mean it didn't happen. There's racism happening when you implement something that shouldn't be happening. We need to keep the lottery, thank you.
Tina?
Hi, yes, thank you so much for for the meeting this evening. Lowell's an amazing academic institution that educates twenty percent of San Francisco public high school students, and I support reinstating academic-based admissions. I noticed in the last meeting that two commissioners said that Lowell educated five percent of the of high school students, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone on the board understands that it's twenty percent of students. In the past academic year, the district did not provide any additional support to Lowell to help the student population or the teaching faculty. Without the additional support, the freshman class did have an increase in failing grades with all of the chaos of the district attempting to remove a large portion of Lowell's budget, and the and the teacher numbers just came out, and Lowell's losing sixteen teaching faculty, while other schools, the highest near comparable is maybe five teachers. Most other schools aren't having any teaching faculty lost, I just
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty?
Yes, here.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, I am a from San Francisco resident with many ties to Lowell community and had always believed that the merit-based system was really valuable. But when I've been listening to this debate all year, I've come to realize that it's not working for the city, that we have, what we have here is a scarce resource that everyone is fighting for because they believe and feel that their life depends on it, that their child's life depends on it. In the school district, what they need to do is provide a better education for everybody, provide access to everyone, and that is not going to get resolved tonight. So what I offer tonight is to put forth a proposal for a compromise. What we're here to decide tonight is what is going to be used for one year for admissions, while the district and the public work on a long-term solution. So what I propose is that everyone open their minds and consider allowing fifty percent of the new students to come in on a lottery system and fifty percent to come in under a merit-based system.
Thank you, Patty, if you could finish your last thought. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leilani. Sorry, hi, my name is Leilani, native, SFUSD alumni, a parent of a foster child who went to Lowell. I am for the lottery. I want everybody to really sit down and think and listen to what we've heard today. A lot of caste system talk, a lot of a majority trying to marginalize other minority communities, people not understanding what segregation is. I'm very sad and worried. We heard a Lowell teacher state that they have not seen racism in their school in eighteen years. We have a task force that's been disbanded. I don't know how you can vote to go back to merit base, knowing everything that you've heard today of what merit base has given San Francisco today. You are pitting communities against each other. We have people making assumptions that children are not working hard. This is a concern.
Thank you. Mikhail?
Yeah, diversity has many different dimensions. Some people like art, some people are passionate about sports, and yeah, some people are into academics. There's nothing wrong with any of them, they're just different. Kids who are passionate about academics need an opportunity to challenge themselves in an academically inclined school. Please restore the three-band system, thank you.
Thank you. Trin?
Hi, good evening, my name is Trin Green. I speak as a product of SFUSD from kindergarten onward, and I'm a graduate of Lowell High School, class of nineteen ninety-two. I'm commenting today to strongly support merit-based admissions. It is not a method of keeping out certain groups, and in fact, it is a way to lift all hard-working kids of all races to excel, especially those without economic resources to seek a rigorous education elsewhere. So please don't destroy a system that has helped so many, including myself, who came over here to the United States as a boat refugee after the end of the Vietnam War and really benefited from my education at Lowell High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirin?
Yes. My name is Shirin. I'm the president of C-Pat Chinese Parents Advisory Council. I believe we must restore Lowell merit-based admission immediately before exploring other admission options because San Francisco needs a strong academically focused public high school like Lowell to support talent-give and driven students. Another delay in destroying Lowell admission policy would deport families of what they seek and push more family to leave the district. Judge's ruling invalidated the lottery. To postpone restoring Lowell's admission policy again To postpone restoring Lowell's admission policy again invites litigation that puts SFUSD at risk once and more. Lowell has been educating students for over 160 years with merit-based admissions. In one year, the lottery has caused the number of D and F grades to triple and put these students' chance of successfully obtaining a high school education into jeopardy. The February 2022-- Thank you. So we support merit-based.
Thank you. Tony. Tony Hines. Anna.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, great. So a lot of people have spoken about their own personal aspirations, about--
Oh, no, it is. It's this one.
Sorry.
I think that's Dorothy.
He's the one that said, any negative-- any negative generational tendencies that have run through our--
Sorry, Tony.
I know, we're not up to that size.
Tony. I'll come--
If Greg is not here--
I'll come back to you.
I don't know what's happening, so--
May I speak, please?
Yes.
Got my time ready to start? Thank you. So a lot of people have spoken about their own personal experiences, about their own personal feelings, et cetera. I'd like to offer the perspective of both somebody who's an SFUSD alum, who was categorized as an ESL student in kindergarten, graduated from Lowell in 2006, and who also is training in education. So this isn't about who deserves what. Every single student deserves an environment where they can get their needs met and where they can be challenged appropriately with the appropriate level of support. For some students, that appropriate level of support, especially if they are working really hard, which many students at comprehensive schools are, and still struggling to meet basic requirements of reading, writing, math, et cetera, that level of support is currently being met by the comprehensive schools. The point of Lowell is not to meet that need. The point of Lowell is to meet the need for students who are sitting there with their minds blazing over and who are losing their enthusiasm for learning because they are not being adequately challenged in the environment.
Thank you. Tony.
Good evening, Superintendent Matthews, board commissioners, and student delegates. I am Tony Hines, and I'm an AIPAC leader. These colorblind, merit-based comments are straight from the alt-right, Trump-loving playbook, which is, I say racist, exclusionary, and unwelcoming to the core. Words like merit-based, black students can't read and write, black students will poor-- they didn't say black students, but it's inferred, will poor higher-level students down, and even outright lies saying the lottery system is illegal. I am asking the San Francisco Unified School District Board of Education members to be brave, bold, honest, to keep the legal lottery system and not readminister the interest test. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Winnie. Winnie.
Hi, this is Winnie. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for your time. I'm calling in to voice my support for merit-based admissions for an academic program such as Lowell, okay? The majority of our SFUSD students aren't even performing at grade level. I think it's unfair to expect all of them to be able to handle the rigors of a fast-paced academic school. The discrepancy between the current capacity and their expectation at a school like Lowell would just be too great. The students would be ill-equipped, and many will receive failing grades as we are witnessing in real time with the increased Ds and Fs. This discourages our students to, from developing academic confidence and desire to learn and progress. Lowell lottery-based admissions will not help our students. I would much prefer that we spent all this time and energy providing more support for elementary and middle schools to bring all our students up to grade level. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say SFUSD has not shown a nexus between lottery and diversity. You are assuming that black and brown students alone are disadvantaged when there are many Asians who are disadvantaged. Lowell has graduated disabled students. I graduated from Lowell in 1978, and my classmate was deaf. There's also a student who is totally blind who has graduated from Lowell. The attack on Lowell is masking what SFUSD should be doing all along, is educating children from elementary school level, and eliminating eighth-grade algebra didn't help. I started a scholarship at UC San Diego where I got my masters in applied math. My scholarship recipient happens to be African-American, but I'm told now that there's not a single US citizen studying graduate math now. We are in a race to the bottom of our country, of the world, when we don't educate our students to meet the rigors of a high-tech world. The California Democratic Party Black Caucus has supported rigorous standards, and they are appalled now that their black children are only at 69% reading at grade level and over 70% do not do math at grade level. They have called for charter schools supporting their black students so that they can achieve higher. We need to focus our children's learning and rather than attacking a particular school.
Thank you. Leila.
I, yes, I just want to say that it is continually strange to talk about Lowell and to not talk about SOTA. I mean, SOTA is about access and privilege. Access to SOTA is about years of market rate arts instruction. There's a sexual abuse problem at SOTA, but I don't really hear anybody connecting specialized admissions with sexual abuse at SOTA. It's just, it's, the art world is just as competitive as med school, right? So what, the divisiveness that you guys are unintentionally creating is making a lot of people resentful because if you're idly accepting SOTA but not Lowell, it's like, it's a discrepancy. You can't just say that Lowell is not a specialized school. Of course it is. It's unofficially a special school. That specialness, for lack of a better word, is what the students are bringing. If you're fixated and hyper-obsessed on only what adults can create, you're not going to understand that, of course, unofficially, there is something unique about the student body. I'm a teacher in SFUSD. We-- think about what the student--
Thank you. Tony.
Yes, I'm Tony Lung. The merit system was set up a long time ago, not just recently. It is not set up by Trump. Don't put everything to Trump. And it was taken away, it was taken away during the pandemic illegally. So we should return it to the parents in San Francisco. And also, it's kind of a form of art, grab and go. We should teach our young people not to do that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hi. This is Mary LaHori, AIPAC leader, and I just wanted to speak about Lowell, and as I spoke last week at the board meeting, I know that Commissioner Lopez and Commissioner Sanchez talked about the racist practices that have occurred at Lowell and historically has happened. Do I think it's intentional? No, but will we have systems and structures that promote merit-based system? This is the result that we're going to get, and I am concerned as a parent about our black students and the black students that are there, and what is the school site going to do to promote safety, a sense of belonging for our black students? And so, again, from the board meeting from last week, we just want to make sure that we are in compliance with section 35160 in terms of health plan ed code, and we are in compliance to that. And again, I think we really have to look down at the deep-rooted issues of systemic racism in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Lam, that concludes virtual public comment.
Thank you. Thank you to the public for providing your comments this evening. At this time, I'm going to start our comments from commissioners. As I had opened up with, we will have two uninterrupted minutes to be able to provide comment both on items number two and three. At this time, I'm going to start with Vice President Bogus. He'll be your timer. Thank you for that reminder. At this time, are there any clarifying questions from commissioners to staff superintendent? Commissioner Alexander.
Yeah, I just wanted, this, we didn't really address this last time, but my understanding is that if we vote no on the resolution to extend the lottery admissions, we go back to the ban system, and my understanding is that that system may be very likely to be illegal under state law. So my question is, what are the implications if we vote for that?
You're asking the legal implications?
Yeah, what are the legal implications if we vote for a system that is illegal under state law?
Commissioner, I hesitate to give legal advice in a public meeting. It would be both, I think, inappropriate and, I think, unethical for a member of the bar to do that. I'm counsel to the entire board. So I'm respectfully, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for me to do that. I would question the premise, though, as well, that the question assumes that it's illegal and just to accept the premises for me to give you implicitly some advice. So I think I need to respectfully decline, and I think that this is something that the legal office can address with the board as an entity.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for clarifying. I really appreciate that.
Cal.
To the extent to which you have knowledge about the situation and you're able to comment, is there any significant previous sort of intervention or counseling by the state of California telling SFUSD that the Lowell High School admission system is illegal?
I'm sorry, I got distracted. I did not.
No, sorry, I should have started by addressing you. To the extent to which you know about the situation and you're allowed to say, do you know of any previous legal action or advising from the state of California intervening and saying that the Lowell High School admission system is illegal?
I think that largely I'm going to have to offer you, Mr. Kinoshida, the same the same response that I gave to Commissioner Alexander, and I will, I will qualify that additionally by saying that I am certainly not, this is not my particular area of expertise as an attorney.
Do you have a clarifying question, Commissioner? Go ahead. I just wanted to confirm that when we go sort of round robin, we're, it's two minutes to address both resolutions. Correct. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have another quick process question. Since we're having discussion for each item individually, will we discuss the first item and then vote, or will we discuss them both and then vote on both of them?
We are going to take a comment from each board member for two minutes on both items three and-- two and three. And then I will ask if there is a majority of the board that wants to have another round, another round of discussion, then I will extend that. But it would be the majority, and then I will call for a vote on individual items of two and three. Vice President Bogus.
Thank you. Yeah, I would say for me, a lot of this process is about how do we prioritize what's going to work best for students and really put student outcomes at the forefront. I think in a lot of ways, this issue has become, it feels almost like a sort of political football with Lowell where people are kind of using Lowell as something to like win or lose, which I think kind of distracts from our overall mission as a district. I think for me, a lot of my decision to support the recommendations from staff is really, you know, letting the people who are the education experts leave and creating time and space for a process so that we don't just talk about Lowell, but talk about all of our high schools, which I think is really important to me. I'm someone who went to high school here and who definitely felt like my high school was inferior to Lowell, both as far as the amount of rigor that was expected, as much as the amount of resources that were available. And I think we, as a district, need to have a conversation about what does it mean to have a high school that is viewed as more elite than others, and how we want to, want to deal with that. I think for me, like, I'm not concerned about the legal issues because I feel like the way the law is enforced is really subjective sometimes, but I feel like we, as a district, kind of as a whole, need to talk about Lowell, about SOTA, about all of our high schools and how they interact with each other and how we're ensuring that all students are getting access to the best education. And so I'm going to be supporting the staff's recommendation as I think that's the best way for us to kind of go about doing it. And just, I think for me, to really trying to depoliticize this issue and take it out of elected people's hands and leave it to the staff who are paid to put students first is also really important to me, and those are the comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Motomedy.
I agree very much with your sentiment about depoliticizing and having this be staff-led. I, I do want to note that we seem to be focused on scarcity, and the task force regarding the portfolio of schools includes the portfolio of schools. And there are no these kids or those kids. These are all of our kids. They all have ability. They all have aptitude. They all have aspirations. There are no these schools or those schools, as far as I'm concerned. They are all of our schools. So the scarcity dynamic indicates to me that we need to make a system better for all students and to create confidence that our high school programs are going to be consistent and they're going to deliver what our students need. I do want to point out that, in my opinion, the citywide enrollment process for the rest of the high school also creates a lot of uncertainty and stress. It is far from perfect. I haven't heard commenters talk about that, but there's really little clarity of what is offered at our high schools, our elementary schools or middle schools for that matter. We don't have neighborhood preference for high schools or theater patterns, and the onus is on students and families to do the digging to find out. And I feel like a lot of what the tension is around Lowell is an absence of confidence around what, what else is happening within our portfolio of programs. So regardless of where a student attends, they should know with confidence that we supported and challenged grow towards their potential, and this should not be a zero-sum game where we pit each other against each other. I'd really like to stop talking about one high school and start talking about all of our high schools. Long Beach is similarly sized and has 11 high schools. Each of them has college or career pathways available to interested students, including 18 pathways that have criteria-based enrollment requirements, and many others do not. There's something for everyone, and I think we need to stop fixating on what we are doing and lift up our heads and look at what we could be doing to better serve our students and to better serve our, their outcomes and ensure they are college, career-ready, or ready for the next steps. So I will support, I'm very supportive of the task force, but I also don't believe in continuing to punt and regarding the lottery.
First, I would like to acknowledge--
First, I would like to acknowledge everybody's valuable and personal insights through public comment. I know that everybody is here today because we all want the best for students, and I appreciate that. I believe that change is a process that we need to pour time and energy into. I don't think that it can occur instantly. In order to create visible and effective change, we need to take a deeper look at the factors in place that prevent students of color from accessing not just Lowell, but all high schools in San Francisco that are deemed better or good because of a variety of resources that other schools are not supplied with. I think that this is a necessary conversation we are having about the problem of diversity in high schools. And I'm glad that we are now paying attention to a real and systemic problem of racism and not just Lowell, but in other San Francisco high schools. But I do not think that the work stops at just calling it out. We need to pinpoint the gaps in resources in middle schools and elementary schools in order to see actual change in student populations at various high schools over SFUSD. Schools are lacking because they are not getting resources inside and outside of school. And this has to do with components such as after-school care and tutoring programs, to just name a few. This obviously translates into high school, and it's up to the school board to examine the gaps in resources and focus its attention on the schools that are understaffed and under-resourced to see its connection to vastly different demographics occurring in high schools. If we are going to focus on schools that have a problem with diversity, and rightfully so, I think that we should, I believe that we should also be focusing our attention on other SFUSD high schools that have similar problems to ensure that we do not pour all of our energy and time into one school. We need to keep in mind that SFUSD is not limited to Lowell. We have a countless number of other SFUSD schools that deserve the attention and time we are spending here on them.
Thank you.
As I said last week, I think I would be remiss not to acknowledge what I can only really describe as fierce emotions from everyone. And there are so many things that I want to say, so many things and nuances that I want to express as I explain my thoughts to you all. But what I really want to emphasize is that the problems happening at Lowell are purely a reflection of longstanding systematic issues in SFUSD and the United States as a whole. And I want to emphasize to my greatest ability that it is not the fault of any student that they have not been taught to read in elementary school, that they were not adequately prepared for high school. And I outright reject any argument that calls students who have failed lazy, less hardworking, or less determined. But given SFUSD's longstanding failure of students from elementary, middle, and high school levels, it is simply impossible, in my opinion, to claim that Lowell or its admission system is the center of inequity in our district. I will lay out some data that was given to the board members about the number of Ds and Fs for freshman and sophomore classes at all of SFUSD's 14 high schools this past year. At nine of the high schools, freshmen had more Ds or Fs than sophomores. Of those nine high schools, only three had a greater than 5% difference. At Thurgood Marshall High School, there was a 7.4% difference between the number of freshmen and sophomores who had a DRF. At Lowell High School, that number almost doubled to a 14% difference in this number between freshmen and sophomores. Lastly, at John O'Connell, there was a 17% difference. And I understand that there are many factors that contribute to this decline in freshman grades, especially this being our first year back at school after spending 18 months online. And I don't think it's fair to say that this all happened because of the lottery system. But somehow, we see five high schools where freshmen actually had less Ds or Fs than sophomores. At SOTA, there was a 12.5% difference in the number of Ds and Fs between freshmen and sophomores, with freshmen doing better. So while, again, we must acknowledge the confounding factors that led to the decline in grades in freshmen, we must also acknowledge that it's impossible, due to the data, not to look at the admission system and see that it's affecting the grades at Lowell. And I want to end off that point by saying that I do not think this decline has anything to do with the demographic makeup of the class. We see freshmen of every race struggling more than ever before. And once again, I outright condemn any person that attempts to say this decline is because of the freshman's demographic makeup. Now, again, I'd like to turn to systematic issues in the district. In my opinion...
Student delegate, we're at time, but please finish up your thought.
I'm not saying the Lowell admission system is perfect, but I do think we should go back to it, and I look forward to exploring amendments next year.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you. Last week, I mentioned that we had a communication from the council from the NAACP, the local chapter, Peter Cohn, and I want to read it into the record. It builds on some of our discussion last week around the racist history of this district and how we got here, how we got Lowell. In 1961, when the San Francisco Unified School District had decided to move the citywide Lowell High School out of the predominantly African-American neighborhood of the Western addition and into the predominantly white Sunset neighborhood, and then to place a student assignment zone around it to advantage that white community there, it was the NAACP and its council who appeared before the Board of Education and led the civil rights opposition to that very plan that would have excluded not only Chinese students, but all students of color from enjoying that asset. In that moment, the attorney from the NAACP said, "By and large, it excludes the great bulk of Black, Chinese, Mexican-American, and other minority or low-income groups. By and large, it will exclude children of families which live across the tracks from the arbitrary district conceived in an unworthy compromise." It is equally important to recall, at this time, there was no standardized test or specific GPA requirement for Lowell. Students were simply admitted on the basis of recommendations of principals, counselors, or other educational leaders who made the subjective decision that a given student was Lowell material. This naturally contributed to so few recommendations for students of color. It was not until 1966 that a GPA policy was first implemented at Lowell, and not until much later that a standardized test was introduced. There's simply a false narrative to assert that Lowell has always been a merit-based school as measured by a test score and GPA. I support the superintendent's recommendations.
I think the task force resolution is a good first step to examine our high school portfolio ranging from AP classes to career tech education pathways, from JRLTC to the performing arts, from athletic programs to mental health services, and everything in between. I look forward to recommendations that can help us create a comprehensive and cohesive portfolio of programs across all of our high schools so that every high school is a shining star and every high school is a desirable school. And while ideas are great, execution is equally, if not more important, as I find from my business background. I expect our new superintendent to assemble and oversee a task force that will do the hard work and help our district create the best high school portfolio that can serve all of our students. And regarding the resolution to continue lottery, Lowell's criteria-based admissions policy should not be blamed for our failure to prepare Black and Brown students for academic rigor. We need to do better in elementary schools and middle schools, as many have said already. Lowell's criteria-based admissions policy should not be blamed for racist incidents at school. We need to do better with anti-racist education inside every school. Lowell's criteria-based admissions policy itself is not racist. It holds every student of every race to the same high standards. If we, as a school district, is going to focus on student outcomes, then we should focus on helping every student learn and reach their full potential. We should not focus on making percentage numbers and graphs look good on paper for adults.
Since I agree with my colleagues' comments about the task force, I'm going to focus on the lottery resolution. As I noted last week, SFUSD unfortunately has a long history of separate but equal schools, where certain racial groups have been excluded from quality schools. And we know that segregated schools produce lower student outcomes. This board says it wants to focus on student outcomes, and we say we believe in equity and justice. Twenty years ago, the Board of Education created the ban system at Lowell in an effort to desegregate the school. We now have two decades of data showing that regardless of its good intentions, the actual outcome of the ban system is that it produces racist outcomes. It also excludes low-income students, recent immigrants who are learning English, and students with special needs. So the question we're faced with is, does this board agree that those students deserve to be educated at Lowell? We also know that the ban system is very likely illegal under California state law. So if we implement that system again, we are deliberately violating the law. In other words, we're engaging in civil disobedience. Normally, when folks think about civil disobedience, they think about taking a stand for justice. But if we engage in civil disobedience by reinstating the ban system, we're actually engaging in civil disobedience to uphold a segregated school. The lottery does nothing to change Lowell's program. It allows Lowell to maintain its academic program while opening the school to all. Do we value Lowell because of the program it offers? Or do we value it because it creates positive academic results by segregating students based on their prior academic performance? What the lottery does accomplish is it desegregates Lowell. Let me give you some examples of student groups whose presence in Lowell's ninth-grade class has increased significantly from year to year, last year to this year, using the lottery system. Low-income students went from 30% under the ban system to 45.8% under the lottery system. Latinx students, 12.8%, up to 21.3%. Students with IEPs went from 4.9% of Lowell's class to 12.5%. Vietnamese students, from 3.7% to 5.1%. English-language learners, across race, 2.5% up to 9% of the class. Black students, 2.3% of the class to 3.7% of the class. White students, who are also low-income, 1.1% of Lowell's class to 2.9% of the class, almost tripling. Chinese students, who have special needs, who have IEPs, 1.1% of the class to 2.7% of the class.
We're at time, Commissioner Alexander, if you want to finish your thought?
I'm going to take Matomedy's rule and just finish up real quick if I can. Well, last time, I stuck with mine really strictly. So Chinese students with special needs went from 1.1% of the class to 2.7% of the class. So again, when you talk about exclusion of Asian students, let's think about all Asian students. White students with special needs, 0.9% to 2.4%. And Chinese students who are English-language learners, from 0.8% to 2.2%. Lowell has a special legacy in San Francisco, 166 years of excellence. And this year, thanks to the lottery, for the very first time, that legacy of excellence is available to everyone. So let's live up to our values and maintain it.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the task force. I spoke last week about my support for this resolution. I believe that this work reorients us so that we are student-centered in our focus. This work allows us to move beyond a myopic view of just one or two schools and really, truly examine our system's failures and our system's successes. It allows us to investigate our high school portfolio and look to see how we may elevate all of our students moving through the SF Unified High School system. I am committed to supporting and ensuring that this is a process that will allow for real, meaningful, and varied participation by those who are driven first and foremost by their desire to elevate students and families and to close the opportunity gap and to support our teachers and paraeducators. I believe that we, the district, have lost trust. And it is incumbent upon this board, our incoming superintendent, and district staff to rebuild the trust. And to that end, the task force must be inclusive and transparent and allow for all voices. I intend to hold myself and my colleagues and our new superintendent accountable to these principles, and will call on the community to hold us accountable as well. As it relates to the lottery resolution, I mentioned last week that I was disappointed and frustrated with the binary choice that we're being offered. But that's what's in front of us, and that's what the vote today requires. I've had many conversations with many members of SFUSD community, and I'll be voting no to the extension of the lottery. My hope, that is, no matter what position you are hoping I would take, no matter whether you're pleased and relieved or frustrated, disappointed, and angry, that you will listen to the next 45 seconds of what I'm going to say. I am fiercely opposed to a dichotomy that sets diversity or equity as being at odds with excellence. Or the idea, excuse me, that some types of people work hard and some don't. I believe in my core that African-American, Latinx students, Pacific Islanders are inherently as smart and brilliant as our white students and our Asian students. I believe that it is our district, excuse me, our job as a district to elevate and lift up our students and to provide them with excellent educational opportunities. I see, 30 more seconds? I see the issue of Lowell as a reflection of a scarcity of a high-quality education that our district is offering. This means we need more, not less. And this is, we're going to require real political will and a very steady moral compass to get this done. I believe we have a better chance of elevating the quality of education by supporting schools like Lowell as opposed to eliminating them and acknowledging the benefits of an academically rigorous program. And I do believe that we have work to do to ensure that these programs are available to and support a more diverse student body. To my colleagues, last thing, I'll say, whether or not we vote the same way, I want to make it known that I have immense respect for you all and am committed to working with you to ensure that our students, and most especially our Black and Brown students, have access to excellence, that they are deserved, and that we, as the adults in the room, owe them. I wanted to start with a correction to a fact in my statement from last week that Lowell serves 17% of SF Unified's high schoolers, not 5%, as I had stated. I apologize for that inaccuracy. However, my point stands that this board has a responsibility to provide a world-class education to all of our students who attend high school in the district. I support this task force resolution because it will create a community-informed process to tackle one of our most important issues, the portfolio of our high schools, and frankly, has been long overdue. Many decades, actually, of overdue of looking at our entire portfolios of high schools. And we have a stubborn opportunity-achievement gap that we need to address head-on. And that in order to do so, our high schools have to be, they must be responsive to both what students need and what parents and families want. The resolution also creates a task force to create a fair and transparent admissions policy for selective enrollment in high schools, including Lowell, an important, but clearly an issue that has divided our communities, and we must move on as a community. My hope is that a task force will undertake a meaningful community engagement process that will help our community be heard and eventually to heal, to move forward. If we don't do this, we will remain divided, not only as a school district, but as a city. And the task force will give opportunity for communities of color a forum to work together instead of being pitted against one another. Well, most importantly, the task force will ultimately provide us with the direction we need to create a world-class portfolio of high schools. Regarding the lottery, I believe in academic magnet school, as I've stated over the last nearly two years. And I support, at this time, a criteria-based admission without the, because of the absence of a high school portfolio that is seeking to offer equitable resources and programming to our students. I also want to acknowledge that Lowell, that Lowell as a school is not perfect on its own, nor is its admissions process. And that is the work that is had. I also want to acknowledge the work that must be done at Lowell, as well as our other high schools, on how to create safe, inclusive school environments. Nothing precludes the superintendent and staff, as well as from making the improvements to support all students. And so, to be clear, the achievement gaps that have been longstanding with our students are a result of the system's failure to address them. This is not the fault of the students themselves, and we must be very clear about that. The heart of equity is that each child receives what they need to develop to their full academic and social potential. And as a district, we have not done this, but it is our aspiration. And similar to what's been raised by my colleagues tonight, I also do not see equity and excellence in being in opposition, that we must strive and fulfill for both. I know this is not, has not been an easy and will not be an easy decision tonight, but I am fully committed in ensuring that we move forward as a district and to bring our communities together. And that we must continue to focus on our student learning and their outcomes. Colleagues, I will see if there's a majority to want to continue for a second round. Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call at this time, and we are going to take the items into... And we are going to take the items individually. It's items two and three.
This is item number two, 225-24 SP1. Task force, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Vice President Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu.
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
President Lamb.
Yes.
Seven ayes. This is for number three, 225-24 SP2, Lowell Admissions. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Vice President Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu.
No.
Commissioner Matamadi.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
No.
President Lamb.
No.
It fails. Three ayes, four nays, item fails.
At this time, I'm going to call for recess. We will return in 10 minutes.
Recording stopped.
Commissioners, we are returning from recess, please. And to the public, you can continue your conversations, but please do so in the lobby. We are coming back. To the members of the public, we are going to be conducting our business, so please. At this time, we are going to our special order of business, item four, 226-22 SP1, resolution to comply with the court order in the matter of GWHS Alumni Association versus SFUSD. I'd like to call for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, and I think, Mike?
Yes. This item, 226-22 SP1, seeks board approval of a resolution to comply with the court order in the matter of George Washington High School Alumni Association versus San Francisco Unified School District. If approved, this resolution will, one, rescind the formation of the Reflection and Action Committee and the board's acceptance of that committee's recommendations; two, rescind Resolution Number 19625 SO1; and three, rescind Resolution Number 19813 SO1.
Thank you. As far as format, I'm always going, I will take public comment, both in person and virtually. I will then also open up for commissioners for if you have comments or you would like to share. I will provide timed of up to one minute per commissioner. And at this time, I will open for a public comment, please.
Thank you, President Lamb. If you'd like to line up to speak, you can do so now to the George Washington mural item. Seeing none for in-person?
We do have virtual public comment for the item. Again, if you care to speak to this item, please raise your hand.
Do you want that repeated?
Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Thank you. Larry Lee.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, oh, my take on this is, if you don't like it, just cover up, but please don't destroy it. And it's also a good learning issue, so you can use it as a teaching tool when you uncover and just talk about, you know, the issue of the person and the Indians, whoever was in the mural. I don't particularly remember right now due to my senior moment. mural, I don't particularly remember right now due to my senior moment, present from the sixties and seventies, but that's my take on, thank you. This is Larry Lee. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Latoya? Latoya Pitcher? We're not hearing a response, President Lam. That concludes virtual public.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I just wanted to say that I am in support of removing the racist mural at Washington High School, and any attempts just to cover it up is not enough. It needs to be removed, and the name needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Good evening, commissioners. I want to remind you that there is a resolution on behalf of the American Indian community and not covering up and removing that mural or any other racist imagery is in violation of items one, four, and seven of your resolution with our community.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Thank you to the members of the public. At this time, I'd like to open up to colleagues. If you would like to provide up to one minute of any comments. Seeing none. Oh, excuse me, sorry, Vice President Bogus.
I was wondering if staff could just, I guess, speak to the point in regards to other resolutions that speak specifically kind of to the mural and the things that are represented and how that relates to this resolution in any way, shape, or form? Does that make sense, question to council?
I don't personally have the information to be able to begin to answer that, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
So there is no other resolutions that you're aware of that kind of would be in conflict with this resolution based off kind of where we're at now?
Again, the question presumes that I would be aware, and given sort of the nature of my work, particularly over the last couple of years, it's been pretty focused in a specialized area. So I wouldn't necessarily be aware of others.
I was just going to say that there may be others, but at this point, he would have to do research in order to find the others and then come back with a more comprehensive answer.
The comment from the public referring to the resolution that the board passed, I think a year and a half ago, in community with the Native American population in the Bay Area, this resolution does contravene aspects of that resolution. That the resolution before us now does contravene aspects of that resolution that the board passed. But that's neither here nor there maybe because it's a resolution, it's not a law, but it is the position of the district officially.
I'll just add, different boards over time have passed a lot of resolutions. So it's, I know there's one that it may have, but there's possibly others. And that's why I said, in order to answer that question, really, it would take, it would take research to really dig in and see if this is in conflict with other resolutions.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Thanks, and I guess one question is, not having seen the actual court order, I think we're to understand that therefore be it resolved comes straight from an order from a judge, and if we do not comply, we would be in violation of that court order?
I think that's correct, Commissioner, that this resolution implements the terms of the Superior Court's ruling against the district and the terms, I guess, the terms of the settlement in that case, I believe, resolving the litigation, which was on appeal and then settled. So this resolution tracks, my understanding is, tracks exactly the obligations the district has undertaken in that settlement, which the board has already approved.
So then I think I would just add, and I'm familiar, of course, understanding that this was the settlement was approved, I don't know that I was familiar with the contents of these details, but that's, it is what it is. And I think I would just want to state for my own desire and to make it known to the public that, you know, my willingness to accept and obey a specific court order is not an indication of my position about the value of the murals.
If I might add, just to clarify, what this resolution does, we, there is a writ issued now against the district. A writ is a directive to a body to perform certain acts. We are required by law to make what is known as a return to the writ, which is a written statement back to the court of how we have implemented and how we will. And this resolution implements that and discharges that obligation.
Seeing none. Ro call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
No.
Vice President Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Four eyes. Passes.
Thank you. At this time, we are moving into our agenda, item C, for discussion items for this evening. And I'm going to switch the order a bit tonight for the discussion items. Number one will be PIF, because I know we have members of the PCCAC here, followed by LCAP, as well as the budget, item number three. So at this time, I'd like to call upon the Director of Public Education Enrichment Fund, Edwin Diaz.
Where are we getting him?
I invite any of the CAC members or who we're going to be. There he is.
Good evening, commissioners and senior leaders. My name is Edwin Diaz, and I'm the Director of the Public Education Enrichment Fund, excuse me. I apologize for the delay. Joining me tonight is Tara Kinney, one of our CAC members who will be joining me in giving this presentation. Are we showing slides, or? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much. If we could go to the next slide. Thank you. So this evening, I will share information with you regarding PIF's timeline, key dates, projected revenue for fiscal years for the current year and for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and the proposed P portfolio for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three as well. And Ms. Kinney will be presenting the CAC's recommendations as well as other information. Next slide, please. Thank you. As some of you may know, PIF was approved by the San Francisco Boarders in two thousand and four through Proposition H, and again in two thousand and fourteen through Proposition C until two thousand and forty-one. PIF provides critical funding to SFUSD and the San Francisco Office of Early Care and Education. The law provide, excuse me, the law divides PIF funding into three portions. The first portion supports the Office of Early Care and Education, while SFUSD receives the other two portions. The second portion supports sports, libraries, arts, and music, otherwise known as SLAM. The third portion supports other general uses, otherwise known as OGU, within SFUSD, providing funding for critical programs such as ethnic studies, multilingual pathways, social workers, and nurses. Next slide, please. Now, I wanted to share with you an overview of the expenditure plan development process and where we currently stand this year. The top swim lanes show the quarterly reviews that we receive from the city of San Francisco. As you see, we've already received our first three estimates for the year from the SF Controller's Office, and we're waiting for our final estimate in this month. The second row shows the work that has been completed by the PIF and district staff. As of today, program managers have completed their program proposals, and the PIF team has submitted a draft of the expenditure plan for your review. In the third row, you see the monthly CAC meetings represented by the yellow triangles. Presently, the CAC has completed its review and developed its recommendations for the board and the superintendent. And in the final row, you see the past and upcoming PIF presentations that will be done, will be given to the board. Next slide, please. The next slides contain some key financial information that we'd love to share with you. Excellent. So we'll start with the current year. It's always good to get a sense of where we are at this point. So fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two projections have fluctuated throughout the year. The present projection is around eighty-four million dollars, and we will keep monitoring this projection as we approach the end of the year. Next slide. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three projections have stayed fairly consistent at around eighty-eight million dollars. We've used this amount, excuse me, this amount to create the expenditure plan for next year. This slide also shows our five-year projections. Currently, PIF is projected to increase annually until fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, where it's projected to be around one point, excuse me, one hundred and five million dollars. Next slide. Now we'll go over our budget overview. Excellent. So as you can see here, our projected revenues are around eighty-eight million, eighty-eight million dollars, while our projected expenses are around eighty-nine million dollars. That's because our SLAM programs came in a little bit higher than normal, and we're going to need around a hundred, excuse me, nine hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, of current fund balance, to cover those expenses. Our present fund balance in SLAM is around nine point eight million dollars, and after the projected uses of fund balance, it'll rest at eight point nine million dollars. Next slide, please. Thank you, Jessica. So here is a look at the proposed PIF portfolio for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. There've been a few adjustments to the portfolio as part of the district balancing plan, which have been presented to the board throughout the year as adjustments to, for example, we've made adjustments to AVID and career technical education. PIF has also looked at current dual-funded programs such as ALI and ethnic studies and shifted their UGF funding to PIF, so you'll see increases in those two programs and their, and their funding. The district also proposed shifting formerly P-funded programming currently on UGF back to PIF, such as math and science and ELA. And lastly, the district is proposing creating a reserve fund in OGU to lessen any impact of future declines in revenue. As you saw in the previous slides, the revenue tends to fluctuate throughout the year, and so having a reserve will allow us to lessen the impact that programs may experience. Also, what you're seeing in the reserve line is, excuse me, is money funding that's being held for potential additional shifts from UGF, which haven't been identified as of yet, but are also part of the district's balancing plan. Next slide, please. The following is a short overview of our evaluation process, which some of you may be familiar with, but some of our newer members may not. Next slide. So a few years ago, the board and the CAC asked the staff to reexamine the PIF evaluation process with a focus on providing quality data and program impact. The redesign of the evaluation process now includes continuous improvement plans, goals, and metrics. Next slide, please. The, the current evaluation report shows continuous improvement plans and that asks the following questions: What are we trying to improve? How, what changes can we make and why? How will we know if the changes led to any improvement? And they also include planned do-study-act cycles by the programs. And as mentioned before, they also include implementation and impact metrics. Programs also had to develop SMART-T goals, which stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-bound, and equitable goals. They also had to develop result-based accountability goals, which matched, which looked at quantity of effort, quality of effort, quantity of effect, and quality of effect. Next slide, please. You can find copies of these reports, our evaluation and annual report, on the PIF web page on SFUSD's website. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kinney, who will lead us through the CAC's presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Edwin, for that helpful overview. Good evening, commissioners, superintendent, staff, families, and other members of the San Francisco Unified Community. We also want to recognize the board's student delegates who have offered their time and much appreciated leadership this year. Thank you for your, your service. My name is Tara Kinney. I'm the parent of two San Francisco Unified students, and I'm here to join you tonight on behalf of the PIF CAC, all of the members of whom weren't all able to join us here tonight. Next slide. As a reminder to this board and the public, the PIF CAC serves as an advisory body for informing and receiving input from SFUSD stakeholders in order to assist the district to effectively allocate PIF funding. We review PIF program information and data. We advise the board and the superintendent, as we're doing here today, and we contribute to PIF communication and awareness. Next slide. I want to recognize our current PIF CAC members and those whose terms ended this year. As you can see here on this slide, people were extremely engaged, notwithstanding the challenges of the pandemic that we've all faced over the past couple of years. I want to thank you to the board, the superintendent, United Educators of San Francisco, and the Student Advisory Council for appointing such a dedicated group of volunteers representing the diverse perspectives of our communities across the district. I especially want to recognize the four student members of the CAC who are unable to be here this evening. That's Vishal Krishnaya, Edwin Jiang, Chloe Wong, and Joanne Yen. And I especially want to recognize Vishal for the leadership role he took on this year as as Chair of the CAC this winter, having served us well as the Secretary of the CAC last year. Next slide. The CAC's guiding principles are listed here and are anchored in ensuring direct benefit to our students and to supplement state funding. As Edwin noted earlier in the presentation, the Public Education Enrichment Fund was created by voters to help bridge the larger gap between state funding and our city's ambition for resources and support for our students. For nearly two decades, PIF has provided a consistent, dependable, and large source of funding that San Francisco Unified can count on. It's well over $80 million this year. In addition, this funding source will continue for another 20 or so years. As a CAC, we focus on ensuring that these funds address access, equity, and social justice, increase social and emotional safety for our students, promote creativity and innovation, and can be sustained over time. We want to see these funds used to build out and support programs on a consistent basis with a focus on student benefit and impact. In the face of the pandemic and its if aftermath, these principles resonate now more than ever. Next slide. This year, the CAC continued to work to meet our goals and our mission. We provided feedback to improve the data collection process. We met with program managers. We reviewed program proposals. We received budget updates. And the culmination of our work are the recommendations we're presenting to you tonight. We want to thank the staff for their ongoing and dedicated support to the CAC's work and to the program managers for preparing the proposals and taking the time to meet with us. Next slide. So here, we've shared some of our lessons learned this year. It's been, it continued to be a very difficult year, and I won't read everything on this slide, but a few big takeaways that I want to share. One, PIF is about 8% of SFUSD's overall budget. We're seeking greater clarity and a better understanding about the district's commitments and priorities for statewide funding and how PIF fits into this overall planning. The CAC would like to improve its confidence that the mandate to supplement, not supplant, is being carried out with fidelity. We seek clarity about the process and criteria to determine which programs are included in the PIF expenditure plan. We're also happy about the progress made this year to strengthen our relationships and our information flow with program managers and to increase the frequency of opportunities to review information throughout the year. A great development was having program managers come meet with the CAC before proposals were reviewed and to answer our questions and share more about their programs. I want to thank the PIF office, the Budget Office, program managers, the board, and the general public, who have reached out to us to support the CAC's work and to remind us and anchor us in the city's voters' intent and the city charter mandates for these funds. One big challenge for us this year was fluctuations in CAC membership and attendance, which was impacted by the pandemic, by the recall, and by the return to in-person meetings. We actually had pretty strong CAC attendance when the meetings were on Zoom. They were about 70% over the first nine months of the year, but when we had to return to in-person meetings in April, our attendance dropped below 50%, and we had several meetings that couldn't take place because we lacked quorum. So this was a real challenge. We also had more limited engagement, just over half of the, of the PIF-rated proposals this year, for example. This year, we also had a leadership transition for the CAC. In January, Carol Hill and Commissioner Motomedy cycled off the CAC and as co-chairs, and Vishal and Tammy Beno came on. Vishal became the sole chair when Tammy resigned, wanting to dedicate more time and attention to her school site. Next slide. I want, now want to turn to sharing our recommendations. We worked collectively to arrive at these recommendations, and the six that I'll present to you are the results of the CAC's discussion and voting process as a collective group. Most of our recommendations are systemic in nature and not specific to any particular program. Our first recommendation is that P-funded programs be required to reflect on their prior year's data and the progress made and incorporate this data into new goals for the coming year with aligned metrics that allow for year-to-year comparisons on at least some of the metrics. This process of continuous improvement is one that we know SFUSD strives for across the district. Second, the CAC recommends the A to G program expand its data analysis to identify patterns and performance, so we can have a better understanding of when and where students are getting off track. Next slide. Third, the CAC recommends that the district retain economically efficient direct service staffing positions rather than replacing them with more costly management positions, which can provide better balancing to program funds, staffing costs, and direct service to students and families. The PIF noted this with respect to ALI, athletics, and student support professionals in particular. Fourth, the CAC recommends that the district seek ways to integrate student and family voices into program evaluation information, such as through surveys and focus groups. And importantly, this shouldn't result in overburdening families with surveys and other data collection, but could involve using existing channels, such as the annual social and emotional and school climate survey that's already administered to all students and families across the district. Fifth. Next slide, sorry. The CAC recommends that the board, superintendent, Student Advisory Council, and United Educators of San Francisco fill their PIF CAC positions in a timely manner when there are vacancies on the CAC, so that we can really function in the way the CAC was intended by the voters. I mentioned how difficult it was for us to meet quorum this year, for example. Sixth, the CAC recommends that the district provide transparent and proactive responses to CAC recommendations. Where the district takes up CAC recommendations, the CAC recommends that the district engage in a monitoring progress towards meeting CAC recommendations and provide regular updates on that progress. The staff's memo notes that they've established a tracking tool to follow progress on CAC recommendations over time. I think this can be really helpful for this process. Next slide. As the board engages in discussion tonight, I thought it might be helpful to share with you some of the recommendations the CAC presented last year. I won't read them, but some of the high-level themes remain the same and I think illustrate the importance of tracking progress on our recommendations over time. Next slide. Scroll through these two, they're just for reference. Next slide. And with that, I'll close. Again, we want to thank the PIF staff, the Budget Office, especially Chief Wallace and district staff for supporting our efforts, and the program staff for their proposals and taking the time to meet with us. I look forward to answering your questions, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you to the PIF team and to the PIF CAC members. I know how much, how many hours you dedicate, and I also want to thank Tara Kinney specifically because you're my appointee, so thank you so much for your service. At this time, colleagues like to open up if you have questions for other, I'm sorry, we're going to take public comment before we take questions and discussion.
Yes, you can line up now if you care to speak to the PIF CAC presentation. Seeing none in person, can we check virtual?
We do have virtual public, or we have some hands raised. Please raise your hand if you care to give your virtual public comment on the PIF CAC presentation. Thank you.
Yes. Good afternoon, Board of Education. President Jenny Lamb. I have had the pleasure of attending public schools and graduating from Galileo High School, a San Francisco native, and my kids have attended Lowell and Galileo as well.
I'm sorry, Baird, where, is this a comment on the presentation that was just given?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry about that. Go ahead.
So with regards to the PIF funding, I was able to serve on the PIF funding for a couple of terms, appointed by Rachel Norton in the past, and I'd like to just encourage the board to take a look at the funding and look at possible best practices that might be going on at various schools, help with the other equity things that we're trying to help boost, to make sure we have good quality education for all of our students in all of our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Latoya?
Thank you. Yes, so also, I am a PIF CAC member, and I just wanted to say thank you to Tara and all my other fellow PIF CAC members. We had a rough year, and I just want to show support. I know the budget, there are some things that folks are going to like and not like the proposed PIF portfolio for '22 to '23, but I do want to commend the PIF for prioritizing math and ethnic studies, and it is unfortunate what has happened to the AVID program. Thank you.
That concludes virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, if you have any questions, comments. Commissioner Sanchez and Commissioner Shu.
Definitely want to thank you for your hard work this past year or so during the pandemic. I really do appreciate it, and I know the whole board does. I will fulfill recommendation number five right now and appoint somebody. I'd like to appoint Luis Rodriguez. He's the principal at Aptos Middle School.
Commissioner Shu. Thank you for the presentation. I apologize for not being very knowledgeable about this, so just wanted to ask a couple of clarifying questions. Page 10, I believe, that's the proposed PIF portfolio for fiscal year 22, '23, where there's a number of adjustments that were made. For example, the ALI program increased by roughly 50%, and CTE was adjusted downward, and then multilingual pathways also. Were there specific programs that were moved around? Was it PITCH or something that got moved to ALI? Or, I heard that, I don't know. And also CTE, was there specifically something that was moved away or?
In terms of PITCH, it's just moving under, so I was, it basically is just who was going to oversee PITCH. So I was overseeing it, and now it's going to be under ALI.
So does that correspond to this move of this amount on this page?
No, the, the, some programs, as I mentioned in the presentation, some programs were receiving funding from both PIF and the unrestricted general fund, and in order to help with the balancing plan, we shifted those costs that were on the unrestricted general fund onto PIF, and that freed up that space on the unrestricted general fund. So that's why you're seeing an increase for ALI. For the programs that you're seeing adjustments going downward, some of those programs were identified as part of the overall district, district budget balancing plan, and so they just so happened to be also P-funded, so it necessitated us lowering their P-funding.
Commissioner Alexander.
I had a comment and a question. Thank you both and all the staff and members of the CAC. My comment is looking at recommendation number three around focusing on more economically efficient direct service staffing positions rather than costly management positions. I feel like the robust staff response to that actually kind of missed the point, and so I just, I don't know if, if Ms. Kinney, if you have additional comments. I mean, my response is that, is that there's sort of a calculation there in the staff response around the daily rate, but I think my understanding of the recommendation was that it was really around which of these positions are more effective in serving students, right? And so it may be that a manager makes a lower daily rate than a social worker, but that social worker may have a much higher impact on student outcomes. And so I think that that response from staff doesn't seem to, I mean, there's other aspects to it, I don't want to totally discount it, but I, and I guess I just want to say, this board member, I think you know, has, has made this point over and over again, that I think that there's a desire to, to really look very critically at these management positions. And so the, I guess I just would have hoped that this staff response would be a little more open to the, to the point that the CAC is making, because it's also a point that multiple board members have made. That was my comment. I guess if, and Ms. Kinney, if you feel like commenting on that, please feel free, but my question more for, for you was, was more around recommendation number one. I really appreciate Mr. Diaz and everybody else involved with this, the new format. I think it's been, I think it's really clear, and the using the function codes as a way of tracking is much clearer. And I just, as someone who gave feedback last year, I feel like I was, that feedback was, was heard and, and just really appreciate it, because it's much easier to track, but I'm curious if, if you all agree, or if there's other improvements that could be made in terms of how the data is presented.
Yeah, just to, I think in reviewing the proposals, and I've been on, this is now my third cycle through reviewing proposals, every year, there's a different set of metrics of what we are aiming, what, what each program is aiming for, and not a look back at the prior year's data. And I think, you know, we were in a new process of proposal development, had a new template a few years ago, but we're settled into it, and I think looking for what are those metrics that we can look to year to year to really see progress and reflect on things that are working and things that are not, and, you know, to build in some accountability there as well. I think that's, that's where that recommendation was coming from. The evaluation report that comes out in the fall through PIF, you know, is separate from the program proposal development process, and I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe you can speak to it, Edwin, how much those processes link up, but I think that would be valuable as well from a public communications standpoint, because the, the fall evaluation is one that is widely read and available on the website, et cetera.
Yes, we, as I mentioned in our presentation, we, we just revamped that report two years ago, and now we're seeing sort of the fruits of that labor. Part of the challenge is that it, because it's new, we only have one year's worth of data, so we can't do a sort of year-to-year comparison yet at this point. So our hope is that once we complete this year's evaluation report, we'll be able to incorporate that into future expenditure plans, and then we'll be able to see that data reflected there.
Commissioner Motomedy.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it, and I love that you've created the, the tracker to the recommendation tracker. So my questions are really about, there's consistent themes that come through, and I know like for two years, we asked for clarity around what's being offered, especially through SLAM and other programs, and I'm wondering if there's been, the question I always has, had as a CAC member, and I, and I hold it today, like what, what does it take to move the recommendations forward? Not all of them require board action, and so now that there's a tracker, how does that relate to a commitment to put forward change and to deliver on recommendations, and also to continue to return to the prior year recommendations as a CAC?
I think-
And I'm specifically interested in the matrix or the catalog. Yeah.
So I think for us as a team, one of the things that- So I think for us as a team, one of the things that is important for us to have as a, as a staff, so that we can then share with the CAC, is continual updates from the board and senior leadership as to which recommendations are going to be enacted. And I say that because sometimes recommendations do have financial implications, so it's not a quick, yes, let's go ahead and just change that thing on the form, that's an easy doable for staff, but when there's financial implications, we need, you know, we need a little more guidance as to, is that something that the board and senior leadership want to enact? For example, three years ago, there was a recommendation to increase the level of, the number of social workers and nurses, and after we did the financial assessment, we realized that that was going to have a cost of about $1 million. So that's not, that's not a call that we as a staff can make, we need your input on that, and if it is something that should be enacted, then we can follow up as a staff with the appropriate parties, and then provide that, those updates to the, to the CAC.
I guess I would just ask for greater clarification around what that process ought to look like, so that when our advisories go through an annual process, and have spent a lot of time and have developed recommendations, that there's some steps taken to bring those forward as staff, and even to, you know, provide your insight as far as like feasibility or a level of effort, et cetera. The other question I had was actually around math, science, and ethnic studies now being on PEEF, because one of the foundational elements of PEEF, I thought, was to supplement, not supplant, and those are core coursework. And I know the CAC has been, of course, very supportive of ethnic studies and math and science, but I guess I'd like better understanding as to, in fact, last year's recommendation around ethnic studies is that it move on to the general fund, because it is core curriculum now, and so for using PEEF funding, I'd like to better understand what the expenditure planning process is around utilizing PEEF.
Excellent question. So there were a couple of factors in putting together this year's plan. One is that we were cognizant of the district, the overall balancing plan for the district, and looking for opportunities for identifying programs to add to the PEEF portfolio that met PEEF criteria, that had, was a program that had metrics, that had goals, that could also have the staff to do all of the requirements that come with being a PEEF funded program. And given where we were in our timeline throughout this year, we felt as a team that, oh, one of the, one of the, one of the approaches that seemed best to take was to look at programs that had been previously funded through PEEF and were shifted off three, now almost three years ago, when-
Hello, I'm sorry to interrupt. I do not know if you can hear me. This is Laya, one of the interpreters, and we cannot hear you at all. The audio is gone.
Testing, can you hear us interpreters?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, all right. So I think, is it okay to proceed?
Yes, excuse me.
Great, sure. All right, so I think, just in response to the question of how does the work of the PEEF expenditure plan and our larger district budget planning that is represented by our LCAP, that, how do those dovetail? And I think that that is the work, I think we're seeing the signs of it here through this expenditure plan, but to take it to another level really does, that is an LCAP discussion, and how do we elect the LCAP be the framework by which all of our budget, including PEEF, follow? So I really think that that is this next chapter in our LCAP work, and, but I am really excited by the work of our PEEF team and the PEEF CAC, because basically, this is the pilot in many ways. I see PEEF as the pilot for how we can, you know, do evaluation, determine if we're having our cycles, how are we improving over time? So, yeah, I think this is a really great start and groundwork for us to come with the LCAP.
Well, that's great news. I'm heartened to hear that, because I will point out that we do have four PEEF staff, and our LCAP is, is not as well resourced, shall we say. So I would love to see what the learnings that staff has, has been going through the last several years under Edwin's leadership, and also to think through how best to use the advisory's time, too, because it's a really, really heavy load, I think, for the volunteers as well as staff to do properly, and it's a big lift. So I think how we think about as a district, how we support that work and how we support that community input, is also something to consider. And I don't know if you, as a CAC member, would like to weigh in at all about your experience, or any recommendations that you have around process at all?
Yeah, I mean, I think- Some of them are built into our recommendations as a whole. I think, you know, just, it's a lot of time, and I, the proposal writing process, I think, is very intensive for staff. It's a very intensive review process for CAC members, and so just making sure that, that, all of that time that happens on the district side, on the volunteer side, on the program staff side, is to, meets the ends it's intended to serve in terms of providing advice to you all and informing the expenditure plan. I think, I mean, that's why I do this work, and I think why my other CAC members do as well.
I just wanted to express kind of a plus one on the integration of the LCAP with PEEF. I know we've been talking about it for several years, and so I'm looking forward anxiously as we launch into that work. I did have a follow-up question around the metrics. I know that that has continued to be, even if it has not been as kind of detailed and explicit in this, to get feedback. I know that you talked about, like, we haven't finished the second year, but curious to hear about, you know, the touch points or working with program staff and how to incorporate that, and like to also hear from Ms. Kinney around, you know, what are some of the discussions at the PEEF CAC, to be sure that there is more of that integrated and kind of proactive and metrics comparison year to year.
I'm going to invite our research and evaluation manager, Dr. Christopher Lee.
And I just want to name that that's also similar to LCAP integration, as something that this board has really also, in this, you know, has voiced the importance around understanding where our investments are going, what impact we're having, and things around that continuous learning, and particularly around the budget, but also ultimately around addressing the student outcomes.
Good evening, everyone. So I would say that this recommendation is, it strikes at the heart of exactly what we're doing, especially this spring. So I just wrapped up my series of end of the year evaluation huddles with all the programs, and I think that we're pretty well positioned going into next year to really closely tie in the evaluation outcomes to the proposal season. So hopefully, going forward, we'll have the buy-in, we'll have the capacity, the staff training in time, to make sure that we're really, having really clear, salient tie-ins to implementation measures, impact measures, using that results based accountability framework, and making sure that there's a clear, clearer through line to return on investment with our PEEF funds.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, and I know you and I have had conversations about this piece as well. I do also just want to say that the program managers who came to meet with us, that was like huge learning for me personally, and rather than coming and, you know, kind of responding to our ill-informed queries post-proposal, they came proactively in front of the proposal review season so that we could learn about the program, become familiar with it, and we're reading the proposals in a much more informed way, and I just thought that was a really important improvement this year, and I hope we'll continue it.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments. Okay, so this is for first reading informational item, and thank you again so much to our PEEF CAC members, to the PEEF team. Really appreciate this work.
Thank you.
We will now move into discussion item number three, the LCAP on the public hearing on superintendent's proposal 22614 SP2.
Good evening, commissioners. While Judson is passing out the materials, I just want to draw everyone's attention to the poster in front of me, which is, it is for the current year LCAP, but I think that just, we do an infographic each year because of the kind of hiatus in the LCAP during COVID, we didn't have our infographic and the poster, but we have one for this year. And so just for the basic structure, as we go through the presentation this evening, because the overall table of contents of the document is similar year to year, this can be a helpful visual aid for the substance of the LCAP any given year. So I'll go ahead and get started. Good evening. I'm Anne Marie Gordon, the Executive Director of Budget Services, and this presentation this evening is an overview of the Local Control and Accountability Plan, the annual update for the 2022-23 year. The objectives of this presentation are to provide a public orientation on the Local Control and Accountability Plan, or LCAP, and to summarize the recommendations and share preliminary responses to public comment on the proposed LCAP. Before we launch into the information, I also want to say that we are always really grateful to our joint advisories and the LCAP task force for continuing to challenge us to find ways to actualize the full potential of the LCAP as a guiding and anchoring document. And I think that their recommendations present an opportunity for us to also highlight some of the progress that we've made, and to recognize the structures that we have in place that we can build upon that can help set us up for success in the future. For tonight's presentation, we brought back a slide we used last year, the metaphor of the many puzzle pieces that we are really putting together to create one cohesive picture as a district. We have many programs, initiatives, and streams of work happening simultaneously to support our students and carry out our strategies. So the LCAP doesn't live in isolation, but is designed to be in alignment with other district initiatives. So, starting with the orientation to, to the document, the LCAP is a three-year plan. It describes the goals, actions, services, and expenditures that support positive student outcomes, and that address state and local priorities. So this is an opportunity for us to share our story as a district and a county. The LCAP is structured in three-year cycles, and this upcoming school year is the second year of a three-year cycle. So in technical terms, this year, this upcoming year's LCAP is an annual update to the three-year LCAP. The, originally, the LCAP began as a document to build accountability around the local control funding formula and the California Department of Education's state-level priorities. It has expanded over time to include other funding sources, other priorities, and really, it's evolved to better encapsulate the full district story, not just the story of our local control funding formula dollars. The goal is to create a coherent picture, but as you can see here, it does mean that there are a lot of things that we are trying to put together into one picture that is clear and understandable, and right, kind of, that it all fits- clear and understandable and, right, kind of that it all fits together and helps us prioritize. So this is one example where in the previous discussion about the work of PIF and how we might better incorporate PIF programming into the activities in the LCAP in the future, that does mean looking at the 183 activities that we have in our LCAP, right, revisiting them, revising them, modifying them, so that they can fully capture all of the work across all of our funding streams in a way that we feel we can actually comprehend, discuss, monitor, and improve upon over time. In addition to putting together those different priorities, the measures in our LCAP consist of a combination of metrics that are defined by the state, some of which you see here on the image of the California School Dashboard, and also metrics that we define locally. So I'll do a brief overview of those metrics in a few slides, but it is similarly a combination of state-determined metrics and locally-determined metrics. And so here we have now some of the detail of San Francisco's LCAP. Each of the following slides are organized by our three goals, which are the universal goals in our strategic plan, Transform Learning, Transform Lives, Student Achievement, Access and Equity, and Accountability. Within each of those goals, you can see the action areas that are encapsulated or the action areas that are covered within each goal. On the next slide, we're going to get a little bit more specific. These are the focus actions that we have discussed, shared. We spent some time at the May Budget and Business Services Committee meeting, going through the LCAP in more detail. These focus actions were also part of our community engagement over the course of the spring. And while all of our actions are essential for that comprehensive picture, this idea of focus actions is intended to help us focus and think about how we find ways to center the LCAP more consistently through the year. Given the high volume of actions and activities in the LCAP, when we discussed the mid-year reflection back in, I guess, beginning in February, we also acknowledged that 183 activities is a lot to think about at once. And so the idea of, and intent to focus would help us bring the LCAP more centrally into more of our conversation. So this is a starting point to think about how we bring some focus to the actions in the LCAP moving into the new school year. And this slide is now, instead of the actions, the measurable outcomes, because we have spent a lot of time talking about the actions in the LCAP and have received feedback that we really want to connect those actions to the outcomes, the associated outcomes. And so here, similarly, you can see the combination of state and local measures that are aligned to these different goals. Student achievement spans different readiness indicators, state assessments, on-track measures, eligibility for UCCSU upon graduation, and English learner progress. Access and equity includes a variety of survey responses for social, emotional learning, reclassification rate for English learners, chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, et cetera. And accountability is a combination of staff, teaching staff-related metrics, access and use of professional development hours, and culture and climate surveys for parents and staff, in addition to a few others. With the LCAP's expansion of how the budget is mapped or tagged to the document, we've been able to incorporate more and more of our budget into the goals and actions of the LCAP. So what you can see here is that we'll continue to build, but broadly speaking, we have been able to map almost the entirety of our recommended budget to the LCAP this year. Over time, we'll be able to refine it. I think, again, the example of PIF may mean that we need to modify some of our actions to kind of update the language of those actions, to better encapsulate funding sources that hadn't been part of LCAP reporting in the past. But broadly speaking, right, we can still align the work of the work funded by other sources to the goals and actions. So that's really what we're working to do, and we'll be able to get better at over time, The last, so this is the last, I think, informational, or we have a couple more. But this, this slide is a new question, a new data request essentially, in the increased or improved services section of the LCAP. So this section of the LCAP really focuses on our supplemental and concentration grant funding and asks us to identify the ways that we go above and beyond utilizing those supplemental and concentration grant funds to serve our LCFF focal populations, which are foster youth, English learners, and low-income students. So this, this data request asks us to compare schools with a student, an unduplicated pupil count below 55% and schools with an unduplicated pupil count greater than 55% and compare our classified and certificated staffing ratios at those sites. It's a lot of, it's a lot of numbers to kind of look at at once and be oriented to for the first time. So starting with classified, in this context, since it is asking about staff who provide direct services to students, for classified, this means our paraeducators. And you can see that the blue column, which is schools with a higher unduplicated pupil people count, or pupil percentage, excuse me, do have lower ratios of staff to student. And they're significantly lower at middle and high school, the difference between the white columns and the blue columns. Certificated is a slightly broader range of job classifications, but it will be primarily teachers. And you can see that similarly, the ratios are still lower, right, at the schools in the blue columns than the white. And comparing certificated, the bottom to the top, our ratios for certificated staff are lower than those for our classified. So I'm happy to answer questions, or we can take questions to provide follow-up clarification. But since this is a newer section of the LCAP, wanted to highlight it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question at that last graph? So the first instance, elementary certificated staffing at 11.4, that doesn't mean our classrooms are averaging 11.4. That means that students have contact with certificated folks who are literacy coaches, et cetera?
It doesn't, so I'm not sure if a coach...
Or other personnel that are in the, in the, in the school that are certificated, but they're not classroom teachers.
It isn't, it isn't, it isn't an average class size. It's, for example, taking enrollment at a school divided by the number of those teachers. Yeah.
Thank you.
There's one more slide. That's okay. I, I thought that might have been the last slide, and I was wrong. So, so the final slide here is, is a summary of the recommendations that we received last week in the Joint Advisory Report. So the themes covered a variety of topics, ongoing priorities that had been raised in feedback previously, focusing on our focal populations among, right, among this list. And we have begun a preliminary response to those recommendations. It is posted on the Budget and LCAP webpage, and Commissioners all have a copy in front of you. We will be updating and finalizing that response in preparation for the meeting next week. And so there's, right, we've, we've gotten the ball rolling there. We, I think maybe the one recommendation that I'll speak to now before I conclude is that we are moving forward. We're finalizing the job description for an LCAP coordinator for next year. Very excited about the opportunity to have a little bit more dedicated human, kind of human energy bandwidth around the LCAP to help with that coordination. I don't think, as, as has been shared in discussion, that having a coordinator changes the entire game and it, you know, it may, it solves every, every problem that we've discussed and, you know, it doesn't fix every process challenge, but it does help us, it does help us focus in the way that we're trying to, to make sure that we're, we're thinking about how the LCAP can be more central to, to our discussions and how we approach our priorities. So with that, I will conclude the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anne Marie. At this time, are there questions? Discussion, colleagues? Oh, public comment. I'm really kind of fumbling public comment tonight. I like to open for a public comment in person and virtual as well now.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Lucas. I'm a parent of a rising senior. On the LCAP presentation, Slide 11, I had a question. I know it's just rhetorical, I can't ask questions, but I'm curious if that includes special education or if that's just general education or who all is included in the certificated group. Secondly, on the, the LCAP, one of my big things that I focus on is absenteeism or chronic absenteeism in attendance. I know that it's highly correlated with learning outcomes for students, and since there are such high numbers of chronically absent kindergarteners at the beginning, you know, start at the beginning, if kids are absent in kindergarten, they have a hard time going to first grade, et cetera, et cetera. I see that there is a comment in here about chronic absenteeism. I appreciate it. I just wish the district as a whole and the community could do a little bit more to focus on that. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a few comments really quickly. I know all tonight and at the previous board meeting, there were all these comments, negative comments about Black student achievement and Latinx student achievement. And I'd just like to urge this board again to stop allowing this racist narrative that Black and Latinx students are inferior to other students, when year after year, we see these budgets and all of this documentation that shows that there's a disparity in how resources and teaching instruction is offered in some of our most underserved schools. So please stop saying that. And I'd also like to also note that in Lowell High School, and specifically in the ninth grade class, most of those students that you guys allowed to get disparaged earlier in the board meeting are currently getting Bs. And so that just also sustains the fact that if we provide the proper resources, all students can achieve, all students can learn, and all students are hard workers. You guys are a disgrace.
Virtual, please.
Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Por favor, levante la mano si quiere hablar usted sobre este tema. Muchas gracias.
If you want to make a statement on this project, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Latoya?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Latoya Pitcher. I just want to say thank you for that presentation, and thank you to Anne Marie for always coming to the joint PAC meetings and answering our 5,000 questions. So in regards to the, the budget that was shown in the slides, the budget really doesn't, excuse me, clearly align with the focus actions. It would be nice if maybe you added a column so we can see exactly where those focus actions are funded. Also, and how the Board of Education approved resolutions fall into the budget would be helpful. Also, I think this will prevent adding fiscal burden to other funding sources like PIF, and also it just suggests that the district is physically irresponsible, which I know you don't want to do, but also balancing the budget for, excuse me, over-resourced schools and under-resourced schools, that would be nice to be able to clearly see as well. And then also, I appreciate the prioritization of nurses and social workers for students, but I would also like to see how that is prioritized for staff, especially school-side staff who sometimes can't take a day off or can't leave immediately and go to the doctor for what they need because of staffing needs. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude our virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. Now I'd like to open up to colleagues. Questions? Comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Matomani.
Just a clarifying question back to Slide 11, the new piece. I am recalling there's now greater scrutiny given to targeted improvements for state-manded focal groups, meaning that when, so it's, it's not just resources, but actual impact. Is this registering with you? And I'm wondering if this is related to that for the concentration piece for focal groups? Yeah.
Right. So I think we have an, and we have an enhanced concentration grant, like our concentration grant is a little bit higher, right, than in the state budget. So part of that, essentially amplifying the weight of the concentration grant, comes with the expectation that we will increase staffing at schools with higher concentrations of unduplicated pupils. So that's, I think this is kind of that accountability piece is like, because they expect that funding to increase staffing at those sites, they want to see the ratios. So, so far, that's what they've asked, how they've asked us to demonstrate that we're doing what was intended.
Okay. So in, in the past or up until this year, even my understanding is that the supplemental and concentration grants were still sort of general fund, even though they were being allocated first, you know, based upon students, they were not necessarily, there wasn't necessarily a through line to where those students are. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
I would say that it's, we still receive the LCFF dollars, they still come into the general fund, and then it's our responsibility to allocate them based on that supplemental and concentration status. I would say this is the first time that there's been more of an expectation, for example, that we invest in staffing at, right, at site, like that, that kind of expectation, I don't think has typically been set. It's more, you need to put together the plan, and through this increase in improved services section, communicate how you're, you know, how you're using your supplemental and concentration grant funding, but it was, it was not as directive.
Commissioner Shu. I'm wondering if this question is clarification for us or for Anne Marie? I'm just going to ask it. We're about to embark our board along with the new superintendent, a community engagement to learn about visions and values and set some goals and guardrails. And I'm wondering how the output of that exercise can be incorporated into the updating the second year of this three-year plan.
May I ask a clarifying question back? It's just generally the, the timeframe over which this community engagement is going to be happening. I think understanding, you know, if there's going to be, if the, the goal is maybe findings in a semester, report in a year, like, that helps me compare to the LCAP timeline.
That's why I wasn't sure if this was a question for you or for President Lim and us. Well, as far as when we would embark on that, it will be this fall, and so we're going to talk about it some more next week. But I think it will be part of the initial kind of data...
of the initial kind of data, kind of collection will be already, you know, things that the district has already undertaken. So it's not like starting all over again. So that's some of the baseline that I'm sure that the LCAP will be very key in helping kind of, quote, jumpstart this work and that the board's committing to in the coming months.
So I was saying that perhaps from our exercise, we'll set three goals that are maybe different from the three goals here in your presentation, right? So how do we square that within the second year of this three-year plan?
Well, first and foremost, we had, as a body, you know, discussed around first seeing what we do have currently and then going back into community to kind of pressure, we called it pressure test, around what those listening sessions, and then, you know, we would land on that discussion. That's kind of the overview of kind of the process.
I guess I'll find out. I was just wondering how our process and the LCAP process, how it's going to mesh together, I guess. We'll figure it out as we go.
Yeah. And really, the LCAP process is all about really living that continuous improvement mindset because we are every year making updates and revisiting and thinking about what is in the LCAP, right? Where, because it happens every year, it means that we're always thinking about how to reflect and improve and build. So I think, once we know more, we'll want that to be incorporated so that the LCAP, you know, can be the truest reflection possible of our priorities.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the steps to get this more organized and easy to understand around the goals and also the effort. I know it's, it sounds like from what you said, it's a rough pass, but like the effort to align the budget along with the goals too and just starting to build that muscle. So I just, I just want to appreciate what you've put forward and the efforts that you've made. And I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, the calendar as it comes together for next year and seeing the cadence that we can all expect and embark on together for the coming year. So thank you to both of you.
I just wanted to express my thanks as well. The visuals are super helpful. I think that's something we've heard time and time again, not only from the joint advisories, but really, how do we make distilling such complex, you know, over $1.1 billion budget to where we can have our families understand where are those dollars and investments going, what impact that they're having? So I'm curious, just taking a really 30,000-foot kind of step back, we talked about the large number of activities, and it's a theme that I think we've raised, I have raised, and the board has also raised about the inputs, outputs, and then the impact. So maybe we could just share a little bit more where we're at in that journey trajectory so that we can narrow even further about, you know, what differences that we are making, how are we looking at the opportunity and equity gap and the resources that are necessary for those investments in supporting our students.
I guess, starting with the revisions to the LCAP this year, I think, right, part of that, looking at all of the actions and activities and recognizing the number, I do think some of the, some of the updates that we made this year to the actions, they were not a drastic overhaul of the actions, but one thing that we did in a number of cases was modify to simplify a little bit. I think that that can help with that. When activities, when one single action contains 12 different activities, right, it just creates a very complicated picture. And then if we're trying to build that through line of how do we know that we're implementing it, how do we know if it's working? For one action, we're trying to monitor 12 things at once. And so part of, right, part of the iteration and that, that continuous improvement is to adopt, adapt, or abandon, right? Do that review and say, how do we adapt this so that we can improve upon our reflection process each year and, you know, understand better the impact that this is having or not having? So I think that's where we started with a more, right, we did a more intensive mid-year review of the LCAP this year that really helped us get a running start to updating this LCAP because we were doing a close review of every action and thinking about whether we're implementing it, how well we're implementing it, and how we might modify it. So I think that's where we've started, but I do think that there's still, there's still more to do, even in terms of connecting those actions to the outcomes, because the way the LCAP, the document is set up, is that the metrics are for the overall goal. You aren't connecting each metric to each action. And so I think that may be, or something along those lines may be a little bit more of where we go next if we're trying to connect the impact of those actions to what they are accomplishing.
Not to get too into the weeds, but I think that that would be something that the board would be intrigued to learn about that process, just so that we're kind of with you on these journeys instead of it all being baked out and then presented. I think that would certainly also bring the public along, along with our joint advisories and our parents and families to kind of see kind of the live, you know, continuous improvement because we've talked about that, right, about adjustments that we might make in the budget. But how does, one, how does a student, a staff member, a family actually see those changes felt, you know, at their school sites or felt on a more of a daily student educational experience? All right. Seeing now other additional comments. Thank you so much to the team, small and mighty, and really the strong progress that's been made. So thank you so much. We will now shift to our final informational discussion item for this evening, which is our public hearing on the superintendent's proposal 22614 SP3 fiscal year 2022-23 recommended I also want to note that it is nine o'clock and I'd like to excuse and dismiss the student delegates this evening, if you so choose, or you want to stay and hang out with us.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Johnson, should I wait for Alicia to return?
I'm sorry?
Should I wait for Alicia to return? Are we okay?
Is this the correct version?
It is. I just wanted to make sure we're, okay.
Oh, we're all set. Yeah, go ahead.
Great. All right. Great. Good evening, President Lam, commissioners. I'm Megan Wallace, your head financial officer for SFUSD, and I'm joined here this evening with Ms. Anne Marie Gordon, our executive director of budget services. I will be providing a presentation on the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 budget and our multi-year projections. On the next slide, I just want to provide an overview of the key items we'll be discussing this evening. To begin, we'll be looking at our budget development timeline, the key budget planning factors, and the budget balancing measures that are built into the proposed budget. And then we'll go into high-level snapshots of the budget, not only for San Francisco Unified School District, we'll look at all resources, unrestricted general fund, and also the county office of education budget. We will be going over budget trade-offs to consider in the event of increased ongoing and one-time revenues as requested by the board in prior discussions. And then we'll close out by looking ahead to next steps in the budget approval process. Next slide, please. So to look back before we move forward, just want to provide this overview of our budget development timeline, calendar. This is a common reference document that's used during our Budget and Business Services Committee meetings. And you can see just over the course of this school year, so looking back in September, all of the steps related to LCAP development, budget development, and the specific board meetings that we've had along the way. And so it has been a busy year, particularly with regard to addressing a $125 million budget deficit that we began with, and I'm very excited to say that we have built in a balancing plan. So the budget for you this evening is a balanced budget, as are the multi-year projections. And then on the next slide, just want to provide a quick highlight of some of the key planning factors that were built into this budget. These are common factors used across the state by other school districts. An important update that we have discussed in prior meetings but want to highlight for the public is that Governor Newsom's proposed May revision to the state budget did increase the local control funding formula, cost of living adjustment to 6.56%. And that those projections in the multi-year have increased since the original proposal by the governor in January. Some other key highlights, just to call out, I think really are, that feed into the trends that you'll note in the multi-year projections, do relate to enrollment, unduplicated pupil percentage, and our average daily attendance. For our enrollment, you can see that the numbers do decline over time. I want to highlight actually a correction for fiscal year 24-25. Our projected enrollment is actually 46,738. So there is a downward trend. However, we are building on our unduplicated pupil percentage of 58%, and that's recognizing the proportion of focal students in our district who do actually draw in increased supplemental and concentration grant funding. But as a result of our declining enrollment, we're also anticipating a decline in our average daily attendance. So that does create a pull down on our revenue projections. Next slide, please. I know the board is familiar with this slide, but just want to call it out of, as our budget balancing plan, I did mention that we started off the year with a $125 million projected deficit. The adopted balancing plan that this board did adopt at the second interim report in March includes $15 million of reductions to our school site budgets, $34 million reductions to central office, and that's in the form of direct, indirect, service, operations, and administration, as well as $76 million of new revenues that had not previously been anticipated at the time of developing our budget outlook. So all in all, we were able to address, you know, our deficit with a balance of expenditure reductions as well as a significant amount of new revenue. Next slide, please. So now shifting into the budget overview, I'm going to start with the county budget, you know, just recognizing that we are both San Francisco County Office of Education, which technically oversees ourselves as the San Francisco Unified School District. The county office budget is significantly smaller than the district budget, but just recognizing the innate roles and responsibilities of a county office, we do establish a separate budget. And just to highlight a few elements of this budget, I'm not going to go into the details, but first I want to highlight the structure, which is that, starting off, you can see the projected budget outlook for fiscal year 2021-22, so the current year. And then in the next column, we have the proposed budget for fiscal year 22-23, that's circled in green, and then the following two years, which are part of our multi-year projections. Looking at the current year, we are, you can see that our revenues are higher than what we are proposing in the budget, so $23.2 million of revenues that dropped down to $13.5 million in the proposed budget. And I want to highlight that that decline is primarily due to the loss of one-time revenue coming in as federal stimulus dollars. You'll see this trend as well on the district budget. However, then looking at expenditures, there's a similar decline, albeit not quite as significant of a drop, goes from $23 million to $15.2 million. So we actually are projected to operate on a deficit in this proposed budget. However, we are anticipating that there is fund balance available to support that budget. And then going into the multi-year projections, that we will be, that that budget will balance out. So I guess bottom line, the county office, but proposal is a balanced budget with a stable outlook in our multi-year projections. Next slide, please. So for the district, similarly, you can see a decline in our overall revenues. However, the decline would have been greater if it were not for some state funding that is assumed within this budget. An important one, I referenced, that's about a $30 million improvement in our revenues, is the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. And so this is all resources. Just want to highlight that this is both unrestricted general fund as well as federal stimulus, other state programs. And so while there is a decline from the current year and into the proposed budget, we are anticipating having a stable outlook where we are working within our means. And ultimately, just going down to the ending fund balance, that we are anticipating being able to maintain a budget stabilization reserve, a rainy day reserve of $40 million, a reserve for our economic uncertainties, so that's 2% of our overall operating budget. And then additionally, we currently are anticipating fund balance in our restricted resources where we will be programming out new revenue streams, such as the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. Next slide, please. So then going into the unrestricted general fund, which has been, you know, primarily a focus of attention for our district because this is the budget where we had been anticipating a deficit of $125 million, and we have now worked to close it. I just want to highlight this budget, and then Ms. Gordon will actually be going into more detail with regard to our revenue and expenditure projections. So overall, again, like the prior budgets, want to highlight that there is a decline in revenue anticipated, again, that is due to the reduction of one-time sources. But we, we actually pair that with an increase in expenditures due to the shift of federal stimulus dollars to the unrestricted general fund. I want to clarify actually that the one-time sources on the unrestricted general fund were related to the Proposition G parcel tax where the district was successful in litigation and we did receive those funds. So we did have a one-time increase in our unrestricted general fund revenue. However, you know, so that, that one-time source did bolster up our fund balance. And you'll see in the proposed budget, we're starting out with a very robust fund balance projection of $150.8 million. And so while our revenue projection is 655.9, which is actually less than our unrestricted general fund expenditures, and we are operating on a deficit of $22 million, we have sufficient fund balance. And we are operating on a deficit of $22 million, we have sufficient fund balance available to support our budget. So I really do want to highlight that net surplus line. Where even though we have balanced the budget, we are projected to operate on a deficit over the three year window. And we will be gradually drawing down our budget stabilization reserves. So at this current point in time, this is a positive outlook. However, you can see that or anticipate that in fiscal year 202526. We could anticipate on this trajectory to be face a deficit yet again. Next slide, please. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Gordon.
This slide provides more detail about our unrestricted general fund revenue totaling 655.9 million dollars for the upcoming year. The primary funding source for our unrestricted general fund is the local control funding formula. And if it can be helpful, the pie chart on the right breaks down the different components of both LCFF. And the other unrestricted general fund components that add on. We have a small amount of federal revenue, other state and other local funds that are unrestricted. Totalling that 655.9 million. Our projected LCFF revenue for the upcoming school year is $571 million. And that is working off of the assumptions in the bullet points, some of which Megan went over on the previous slide. The cola that is proposed by Governor Newsom, driven by improved state revenues. An average daily attendance that reflects a three year average. And an unduplicated pupil percentage that also is based on a three year average. This is, I believe, the the first time in a couple of years that our unduplicated pupil percentage has increased. In part, I think because of that rolling three year average, rather than looking at just a one year snapshot. This slide is. Where we won't spend too much time on this slide, but it is. It's here to briefly review those assumptions that are underlying our unrestricted general fund revenue. So across the top of the table are there different iterations of the state budget. The governor's January budget, Governor Newsom's May revise, and the legislature's budget. So. These different versions take slightly different approaches to funding K-12 education. So since the governors may revise and the state legislatures budget. Are not the same across all of these different factors listed in the rows. We've incorporated aspects of these assumptions into the recommended budget, which you can see on the furthest right hand column. As the state budget is finalized, and I believe we'll talk about this in next steps, we plan to bring a recertified budget in August. That will where we'll be able to assume what has been decided in the state budget more fully. And this slide is an overview of the 677.9 million unrestricted general funds expenditures. And this is for anyone looking at the budget book, exhibit five. So again, this is focused only on the unrestricted general funds expenses, it is not the entire budget. But I do want to call attention to this exhibit and to this table because this is a. A reworked exhibit compared to the exhibit five of previous years. The structure is the same in that we're categorizing our budget in different ways to present a pie chart of our budget for the upcoming year. But it is reworked to align with the conversations we had through the fall using the zero based budgeting framework of. Direct services, indirect services, operations and administration. This is inclusive of school and central office budgets as well, so it doesn't differentiate. You can see, looking at the direct services section as an example, that general education instruction. Special education instruction are there. Right guidance and counseling, attendance and social work, and so these subcategories are also aligned to function codes. So we're trying to standardize the way we're presenting this material in a way that's replicable, that we're not. I would say self reporting or kind of subjectively deciding categories, trying to really standardize how we apply the codes in our budget and then how we. Report on them. So I'm personally excited about that, but I think if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I think this hopefully provides a more comparable view and snapshot of how our unrestricted general fund budget. Is is planned for the upcoming school year.
I'm excited about it, Anne Marie. So next, I just want to highlight, you know, really transitioning. This is a transition point between highlighting our expenditures in our budget and thinking about trade offs on next steps. On on how we think about use of additional revenue that may be coming our way. I want to just recall that Anne Marie highlighted. Some assumptions that were built into this budget. One key one being the discretionary block grant that is being proposed. In one former fashion in both the governors may revision as well as in the legislature's proposed budget. So we went ahead and built in approximately just under $20 million of one time funds associated with this block grant. To cover immediate commitments that either this board has committed to or. You know, staff will be moving items forward before you seeking your approval. So the largest of which being the empower SF deferred net pay MOU. The board did previously approve that that MOU which allows for stipends to our employees. So we went ahead and built in this one time source to pay for that one time expense. And on down the list, you know, empower SF contracts, there are going to be contracts coming before the board next week. That would rely upon this budget, so we did build it into this proposal. So I'd be happy to talk in more detail about any of these line items. You know, through the question answer portion, but I think the main thing I want to highlight at this point that is that. For the additional rev, any use of additional revenue assumptions that are coming our way as a district. You know, you'll see it in the calendar upcoming steps that the state is poised to adopt a budget. In the coming week. That we can anticipate additional revenue. But. But given that deficit outlook that I highlighted in previous slides. It is important that we consider, you know, different factors. And two main ones that I want to start by highlighting here would be. That imagine a world in which SFUSD received another $50 million. That one consideration would be fiscal sustainability of how those funds were used. So considering, for example, that should those funds be ongoing? The use of those ongoing funds could be used to support current operations. And therefore reduce that operating deficit, actually clear out that red line so that in the multi year projections. You don't see that forecast for a future budget deficit, that we would use those ongoing sources to pay for current ongoing uses. And create a more fiscally sustainable outlook. But then also thinking that one time sources could be used for one time uses that are large one time ideally. And could make a significant impact for our district, so thinking about technology system upgrades as one example. Another major consideration in addition to the fiscal sustainability could be the staffing stabilization. That has been a priority that this board has supported in the past. So thinking about if we were to receive large sums of ongoing sources, looking at possibly ongoing compensation for employees. Just for example, we know that the city and county of San Francisco has increased funding compensation for our classified staff. You know, how might we use our ongoing revenue to be able to continue to compete for that segment of our workforce? In contrast, if we received large sums of one time sources, rather than creating ongoing salaries for our employees. We might look to tools that are one time nature in compensation such as stipends. So there are other, you know. Other values and goals that I'm sure that the board will want to discuss, but I put these two forward. Because I think that they represent some of the largest buckets of expenditures that you might consider. On the next slide, I actually attempted to put together more detail about the different. Ranges of costs associated with these different expenses that I've been describing. But I think first to frame it up, just want to highlight that SFUSD does have a wide range of both ongoing and one time needs. So it is important to take stock of as many of those things as we can, so we can take a holistic view. Of of those needs and make decisions, you know, that are based on the priorities of the board. And I know that there is a real desire to act quickly. That there were significant cuts made to school sites, to direct services, indirect services. There may be a desire to look to areas to possibly restore some of those program areas. But the reality is that we do need to take it slow. That I would discourage acting too quickly. Because in all honesty, it's going to take some time to analyze the state budget and understand the full scope of the impact. And benefit to our school districts. So again, in an effort to take a holistic approach, I wanted to provide this overview of some of the key investment areas. That this board could consider. And you can see that, you know, starting at the top, they've provided a range of costs from low, medium and high. Thinking about the type of expense, is it a core service, is it a priority? So that's in alignment with the zero based budgeting structure that we followed for the balancing plan. But then also thinking about it, is it ongoing, one time? Or might we consider either approach depending on the nature of the funding that we receive? So I'm happy to revisit this more through the discussion, but just wanted to highlight. Some of these key categories of spending that might be considered as well as the two largest sources of funds that we are anticipating. A combination of like, so the LCFF protection and augmentation is the additional revenue that. We could receive on an ongoing basis. I anticipate that could be between 11 million and 50 million. The block grant could be between 10 million and 70 million. I don't expect there being a scenario where we would receive both, that we would actually see a $120 million increase. It might be somewhere like a $10 million block grant and a $50 million increase in our LCFF. And so it's things like that that really need to land before then, before we can really go and understand. Where we can choose off of the expenditure options. But I think nonetheless, it's important for you all to see this picture at this point in time. Next slide, please.
Before we wrap up, I wanted to just briefly. Get tactical about the documents that are part of the recommended budget. The first here is the recommended budget overview or the budget book. And so the budget book is a compilation of both the district and county budget. It contains both a narrative section and exhibits. The narrative is background information, we do update it every year, there is some information that rolls over year to year, but we update it, review it. Revise it to make sure that it reflects our plans for this upcoming year with with highlights and changes of note. The exhibits are a number of different data visualizations, it's charts, tables and graphs. And many of the exhibits segment our budget in different ways. Basically with with a budget of over a billion dollars, it means there's a lot of different ways we can. Right slice and dice the budget to look at different things. And so I would recommend as you go through the exhibits to check the titles to make sure that you know whether you're looking at. District, county, unrestricted or restricted general funds that'll help orient what funding sources we're talking about. And what funding sources are being summarized in each exhibit. The last piece here is that there are a couple of updates to the exhibits. I shared the update that's listed here about exhibit five where we reorganized the categories. This is mainly because I know that the exhibits can be a really important point of reference year over year. And so where there are changes, it means that you won't, you'll lose that year over year comparison specifically for this upcoming year. We moved what used to be exhibits nine A and B up to the front. We made them zero A and B to begin with an overview of our district operating funds. And then down at exhibit nine A and B is where we created. Two new exhibits that are the district by division and by function. So that includes all funds and all resources. And then nine B has the same information, kind of. Collapsed with a comparison to last year's adopted budget. So I encourage everyone to take a look. There are also a few other exhibits that structurally haven't changed, but where we did incorporate a little bit more of that snapshot by major function. So. Otherwise, things should look pretty similar, but helpful to note some of those year over year differences. And the final, the final piece, the summary of staffing changes at school sites is a report, a supplemental report. It's available on the SFUSD LCAP and budget webpage. And this is, this was created with a request to see a little bit deeper dive into how positions change from one year to the next at each school site. It includes the majority of positions at schools. It includes weighted student formula, the multi tiered system of supports, centrally managed allocations. But it does not include special education, nutrition or custodial staffing. So it writes the the bulk, but not all of positions. And what we see this year updating the report is that we see the overall reduction of. 132.21 FTE at school sites, which corresponds to the $15 million of enrollment based budget reductions. We do have. Centrally funded para educator positions that are not included there. And this student to adult ratio, I do want to caveat that we know that this will be low because this includes administration. These numbers we expect to be lower than what we would see for class for student teacher ratios, for example. Because this is going to include all of the staff at a school. But I do think it's it's helpful. And I think. I think valuable to note that compared to last year, these ratios are very similar. Because of the fact that we have declining enrollment. In some cases, we have sites that ratios, these ratios actually. Became lower even with reductions, so I think it's. I don't say that at all to, you know, to understate the impact of reductions at school sites. But when it comes to that that ratio of staffing at school sites to our students. We are seeing that that overall level of staffing compared to the number of students at each site. Has not been severely impacted by those cuts. Primarily due to the reductions, or sorry, the enrollment declines that we have seen. So with that, back to Megan.
Thank you. So to close this out, just want to highlight major next steps in this process. You know, we're here this evening really seeking input from the Board of Education and the public on the proposal that's before you. We'll have a couple more days before we need to finalize our documentation. To get ready to bring the budget back before the Board of Education next week on Tuesday for the second reading of the budget along with the LCAP. But a big highlight for next week is also anticipation of the deadline for the state budget adoption, where we'll start to see those state numbers land. And then we'll take time in in July and through early August to really understand. That nature of one time versus ongoing revenue and start preparing options for the board to consider with regard to how best to invest those funds. And then as Anne Marie had mentioned, that we will be back in August in anticipation of presenting a revised budget to the board. Thank you, and we're happy to answer questions. Thank you, and we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Emery. Megan, I'd like to open it for public comment, please.
If anyone cares to speak to the budget presentation, they can line up at the podium. Seeing none for in-person?
If there are any virtual participants who care to speak to the budget item, please raise your hand. Can we have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Por favor, levante la mano si quiere hablar sobre el presupuesto. Gracias.
If you want to make an opinion on the budget, please raise your hand.
Seeing no hands raised, President Lam.
Thank you. I also want to recognize that both of our fiscal experts are also here joining us this evening. Hello, Pam Elliott. So I'd like to open up for comments and questions. Vice President Bogus.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could talk a little bit about Slides 12 and 13, the budget trade-off scenarios? And I think the thing that I'm curious about is if you could kind of talk through these options again, I guess, within the context of our structural deficit a little bit. I definitely understand the flexibility we have, but I don't see how it is connected to a long-term plan to change the structure of the deficit, structure of the district to better address the deficit. And so I guess I'm kind of thinking like, what is the thinking that is going into that? And I know that we weren't able to kind of fully embark on our zero-based budgeting process last year. And I know, and so I guess I'm kind of like, how are all these things going to feed together kind of before we get to August? Or how we're going to kind of address that, I guess, bigger point with this kind of happening before we have had opportunity to, I guess, fully wrap our heads around that, as well as incorporate the new superintendent and community input, I guess, in those processes?
Well, I do think it's a balancing act of the timeline of the board wanting to act. So there is a lot of work that's ahead of us as a district. So looking at the fall as being an engagement and listening session, you know, really getting a better feel for how the LCAP might further be refined. I mean, one approach, an extreme approach the board could take would be to say, the July budget is sufficient, that, that new revenue may be coming in, but there's a need to pause and reflect and restart or start afresh with the next year and take time to really do that work with the LCAP and use any additional funds that are based upon updated thinking about the board priorities for how funds are used. I think that a middle ground would be to say that, in addressing that longer-term deficit, although, would be to make sure that at least, let's see, I'm actually going to go ahead and refer to Slide 8, where in Slide 8, you'll see that the net surplus or shortfall in the current year is 22 million. We're operating on a $22 million deficit. As a starting point, we could say that any ongoing revenue up until that point is dedicating to closing that deficit. So you would have your revenues increased by 22 million, and that all of those funds would be dedicated to just stabilizing our budget on an ongoing basis. You could even say on that out year, $34 million is what we're operating as a deficit, that any ongoing revenue is actually being built to support those ongoing operations. And that if there are remaining surpluses, those go to one-time uses. And that's an area where the board could take an immediate step to say that it's not committing any additional ongoing funds to new, ongoing uses until it's done the work of setting priorities for our district. The more, most extreme route that would be the least advisable would be that we see all of this new income come in and we build in new, ongoing expenses that fully expend those dollars. And so I think, Vice President Bogus, I know that from our discussion last week, you were starting to pose these questions. And the point of these slides, I think particularly Slide 13, is to give this board food for thought. I don't have the answers for you right now, unfortunately. I think the food for thought is to sort of think about the priorities of, you know, what's most important, to act quickly and to get work started in certain areas. And if there are areas, things that need to move quickly, that you're very clear on which goals you're trying to support. So staff stabilization could be one of them. But that, I guess what I'm advising primarily is that you take the time to look over this list and consider just what resonates most with you is what, for what you would need to move forward with in August. And otherwise, just that we are taking our time and not moving too quickly to spend down those dollars.
No, I appreciate that. I think the concern for me is if we do receive additional revenue, whether it's ongoing or one-time, that would kind of equal kind of our projected deficit spending, I still would be concerned if that's all that we did and we didn't actually like address the drivers that led to us having a structural deficit. And I think partially what I'm struggling with is knowing that we need more supports and programs, and the issue is that with declining enrollment, we have to realign all of our priorities to better do that. Without that happening, I guess my concern is like, we spend money this year, which isn't setting us up for spending that money the same way next year because of the amounts of shifts that have to happen. And I think how we should balance it, like, I definitely want us to assess the best way to use this money, but I think I'm trying to figure out, how are we doing that with the long-term plan versus a short-term plan? And I feel like a lot of the planning efforts we had to get us there, we've essentially had to stop. And so now I'm just, I'm really kind of wondering how staff is going to be proposing the way that we direct these funds, because like, we definitely as a board have thoughts and input, but we actually aren't the ones who are controlling all the levers at the individual levels. And so our judgment versus the overall vision and direction the district wants to take, I think, may not be entirely aligned since that is stuff that, that staff and site leaders will be leading. And so I guess maybe not to, to say that we need to dissolve, resolve this now, but I think figuring out in August when this comes back to us, how it's going to be presented in kind of a holistic way versus as we have additional money, how do we use it to fund things kind of in a way that isn't strategic or systematic to kind of our long-term shifts that we're trying to do? If that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, I, so what I'm hearing from you is a desire to take a holistic approach. And also, you're highlighting things that really call for me, the need to get our new superintendent onboard and have direction from that leader. So I think that's also where I'm, I'm feeling a void of direction, that it's hard for me to speak ahead of having our superintendent onboard. And so until that happens, that's where I feel like it's, it's really a matter of just saying, study, keep considering, let's get Dr. Wayne here, understand, you know, what his recommendations would be. And then from there, I also want to shift and call out the LCAP playbook, right? If anything, like, if we were to move now on any investments, I would want us to frame it under the LCAP framework of what goals are we supporting, what actions, you know, what are the desired outcomes? Like, let's go ahead and practice that and be very clear that if we were to look at this list on Slide 13, document all of those things in association with those investments.
I appreciate that clarity too, and that thought. And I think that's helpful. I think the struggle that I just have is that we're just at a place where we are having to like, remove programs that are meaningful and valuables to families that they don't want to see removed, and we don't have clear plans to offer alternative supports to kind of cover those. And so it kind of creates two, like contrasting, I think, points of emphasis of like, what do we do that's best for our budget? What do we do that's best for families in the short term? And I guess I'd rather not have to make that decision, have an option that brings them together. And I guess additionally is like, if staff isn't feeling like, because of the transition, that they're going to be able to present something that brings all of that together, then I guess letting us know early so that we can figure out what that means for us as a board to do that. Because I think my concern is, if you come to us in August with more money, we're going to be inclined to be like, cool, let's spend as much of this money as we can right now and not really consider, I guess, the long-term implications. And then we'll be back in a year with people very sad that things are happening and that they don't feel like we have control. Now I'm just complaining about my budget fears. So I guess I'll just say this to say, hopefully we can keep the dialogue going with the board and we can have the dialogue with the current superintendent, the incoming superintendent, and just be really clear about kind of how we're going to balance all these things. Thank you.
All right, colleagues, I know it is quarter to 10 o'clock, but this is also really important. So if I can just ask, if folks can be succinct in either their comments or questions, and I will go to Commissioner Shu.
It's a question about, is there any plans to reexamine how we fund programs? Are there, we give it all to schools, whether we centrally administer them? Is there any reexamination of that in the whole context of budget balancing?
So I believe, sorry, my computer died. Slide 11 with the overview of the trade-offs does include a row for direct services and program supports. Oh, 13, thank you. So I think, again, not wanting to make one-off decisions without looking at the impacts of that broader, long-term picture. That is an area where the board could consider that if, if there are programs that were reduced or where there are, I just, thank you, where there's a desire to, to bring on new programs that would require an unrestricted general fund, that, that's the thinking around that line item. I do want to go ahead and highlight though, that one, I mentioned the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program very briefly, but it's like the unsung hero of our future discussions about our budget, that there are going to be very rich opportunities brought forward on how those funds can be used on providing additional supports and services at our school sites. So just thinking about the fact that there are restricted resources out there, that it is, it is incumbent upon staff to come back and provide proposals for how those funds are used. But the main thing being that this is an unrestricted general fund picture, but to really, I think, get our district where I'm hearing the board wanting to go, we'll definitely need to leverage those restricted resources. And so we will be bringing them into these discussions as well.
Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you. First, a comment just of thanks for the really strong work that I think your team has done around clarity and transparency around this. I was also really excited about Exhibit 5, Emery, as well as Exhibit 9. And but in all seriousness, I think you've, you've really clearly taken the board's feedback and tried to include a lot more ways of, of looking at the budget and in particular using the function codes so we have standardized data, I think is, is really, really helpful. I also really appreciate this, the approach around moving forward and the kind of big-picture approach you've presented, as I think I've said before. I think my question is really more around the budget itself and just trying to understand, understanding that this year was sort of a transitional year and we, we had to make this balancing plan, but just trying to understand where we landed, right? And so as maybe some brief context, I know it's late, but my colleagues, my new colleagues may not be aware, but that a year, a little over a year ago in May of 2021, Commissioner Sanchez and I had proposed the instructional spending resolution, which, which passed the board unanimously. And that was really like, intended to kind of frame the conversation around budget balancing when we knew, because we knew at that time we were going to have a deficit. And so there were three main areas. One in that resolution, one was around really prioritizing classroom instruction because we had some data showing that San Francisco Unified was actually the, the lowest of any large district in California in terms of the percentage of our budget that was spent on class, direct classroom instruction. And so that actually grew out of, then out of that grew this whole focus on direct services, indirect services, all that kind of work. Another piece of that resolution was really around kind of thinking about budgeting, baseline budgets, and what schools really need to accomplish Vision 2025. And so again, that, we didn't get that far in because we were in a, in a cutting mode, right? But, but I actually think, an example, one of the things, I was looking back at the resolution, one of the resolved was where we as a board actually committed to finding funds for that. And I think the work that some of us have done with the supervisors around this charter amendment is an example of that, where we, and it mentions actually the RISE initiative in there, and the charter amendment grew out of that. So it was, so the idea was, we're going to try to find resources to fund a holistic community schools model of Vision 2025. And then the third piece of the resolution was around zero-based budgeting, org charts, and the, and the kind of analysis of upper management, which I think, again, we've made some strides on, not where we want to be yet, but, so I just, just for context for the new folks, I think that's, those conversations have been going on for over a year. So my main questions really, and I can follow up by email with these, but just to want to say them to make sure I'm, I'm saying them. One was around, and we had a brief email exchange around this, around just understanding the instructional spending percentages. And from the, from Exhibit 9A, it actually looked like it went down this year compared to, or next year compared to this year. So I would just love to follow up on that. Maybe we could follow up offline to kind of understand what's going on there, because I kind of, I expected it to, to go up. The second question I had was around, oh, the upper management analysis, that I believe that there had been an email exchange with Ms. Bajor and Ms. Wallace and I around that, just so wondering if we could see, because again, my, my hope and thought was that we would actually see a reduction there based on the information we've been getting. And so again, I just wanted kind of an update on that. And I think that's it. I think those are the main things. I just really wanted before I voted for the budget, I want to make sure that it's a budget that I feel like is in line with these goals that we've set over a year ago and, and just, again, because of, also just feeling accountable to community, to, to students and parents and educators that, over the past year, of having made a commitment to, to sort of advocate for those things. I want to make sure that the budget is in line with those values because they, because we've been having this conversation for so long. So, and like I said, I can follow up, you know, just before next week, maybe I can, I'll send an email with the more detailed thing, but I just wanted to sort of say that publicly, and I'll follow up offline.
Thank you. Commissioner Matomadi.
I'm going to be super duper quick. I mean, part of it is, we're, I'm coming in March of this year, so it's been pretty baked. I don't have a huge, I mean, I share the same questions about what next. But I was really interested to see on Slide 13, board resolutions as a line item. And I would very much like to understand as a board member, since that is very much my lane, board resolutions and how they're impacting both, you know, the, the policies, the programs, and the bottom line, and then hopefully some connection to student outcome. And so as we move forward, I would be interested in, in hearing more about that and understanding more about that, because I often hear resolutions referred to, but I don't know if they're going to sunset, what the, so the world of resolutions would be welcome, so.
Yeah, I, I think that that's a great point. We do have a good deal of resolutions and not all of them are funded. And that's, I mean, and so this really is identifying the range of different steps that the board could take to fund, you know, those resolutions. And, and yes, building in an inventory, making sure we're sharing that with you all. And, and I think, now I'm speaking about the LCAP a lot, but aligning those resolutions with the actions, and I think will help with prioritizing what should be funded versus what should be sunsetted.
Let me know how I can be of help with that.
I have a couple of comments and questions as well. I think overall, my focus of any decisions moving forward and absolutely agree with the pace, but really wanting to dive deeper of understanding how we're using funds for this next year, that is for supplemental this next year, that is for supplemental learning for students rather than, you know, paying, covering the fiscal deficit. That's something that, to me, is really important, that ties directly as well to the organizational priorities and really honing in on how does that tie back to the LCAP as well as the work that we'll be embarking on together here in this fall. So that's really top of mind. And that's something else, I think, with Slide 13, if this is helpful to give some direction, if you've probably heard some themes, is that while I appreciate it has to be very high level, I think it's upon us, you know, to really understand with those range of costs or investments, like, how is it tied to those student outcomes and the, and the change that we want to see in those student learning? So I think that would be, from my point of view, what would be helpful. Another aspect I wanted to lift up is the importance of taking care of our business operations. And so in reviewing the appendix, I just want to acknowledge and recognize that there's been understaffing for fiscal 90 and that, while certainly this will be under the direction of our Superintendent, Superintendent Matthews as well, Superintendent Wayne, is that, for me, it's absolutely critical that those supports are in place for budget balancing, for our payroll system, for the things that we've talked a lot about. And that's just my perspective, that how important it is to make sure that we shore up that staffing and support of the business operations. Because if we don't, then we're going to be consistently understaffed, running behind while trying to really be focused about how those investments are supplementing the learning for our students ultimately in the classroom. So I just wanted to at least share with you all kind of some of that perspective. A couple of questions related to, do we know when the Stanford report analysis, research analysis around the MTSS will be shared, will be finished or shared?
That is a great question. We, I will follow up because we should. I know that we, we met earlier in the spring with the preliminary findings, but I, I'll have to find, confirm when we're receiving the final reports.
Because I think that would be really key, as a key tool for us to understand those investments, where have we gone, what impact have we wanted to see out of the, and then what continuous improvements or learnings that we might want to adjust to. And then lastly, this might be a question for both the two of you, as well as potentially our fiscal experts, about just the overall, quote, concern around one-time funding to continue addressing the deficit. Like, what kind of risk level are you all seeing?
Just to clarify, the risk level of, of us using one-time funds?
Yes, because that was one of the major, you know, reflection, like, I would say, points, right? Is that we've heavily relied on one-time sources, or from my perspective, even short-term, to really ultimately, you know, addressing the deficit.
Yeah, so, right, a great example of that being our use of federal stimulus dollars. We had a large one-time source, we were able to balance just very temporarily, but then once those funds are gone, it creates that, that gap that we had to address through budget cuts. So to the extent that we were to, if we were to receive additional one-time sources and match those one-time sources with ongoing uses, that that deficit, that net operating revenue line would, would deepen on our outlook. So, so to mitigate that risk, that issue of building in a deeper deficit outlook for ourselves, it would be critical for us as a district to identify one-time uses of those one-time sources. So, yeah, that would be the most straightforward way of, of reducing that risk.
I think Mr. Duchan might have a response.
Thank you, Zasan. It is. So, great question. Thank you for the segue. There's a double-sided risk. So let me start with the easy way to solve the budget solution. If you address the staffing level at schools to the level of enrollment, then you will align your ongoing funds with your ongoing spending. And if you think of your one-time funding as additives, it's about time for my ice cream sundae, but they're the sauce on the sundae. You have to have the ice cream there first. And if you continually use one-time funding to shore up your budget, you're doing two things. You're always leaving that risk at the end of that two, three-year period that there's going to be a deficit, as there is in this budget. The other thing is you're using one-time funding for your base operations, kind of going back to Commissioner Shu's question about whether you're looking at a school-based or a district-based funding model. Irrespective of the model, you're funding it with monies that should and were intended to be used for other things. For example, you know, COVID mitigation from the ESER funds. We don't know yet what the intent of the legislature and governor will be of the one-time funding. So, and I just want to throw into, just so you can hold your breath for a while, everything I'm reading is you will not know that when the governor, when the governor's budget is passed. A lot of this is going to come through in trailer bills that will not be here till August. So from both a state perspective as well as just a district budgeting perspective, take your time with that. The intent is not that you be ready to spend it as soon as it comes out, but you put thought and consideration into how those monies are used. But I really want to emphasize that, in essence, if you continue funding a school at the same level and the enrollment drops, you're really raising the funding for the school. It's kind of like if your, your income drops at home and you don't reduce your spending, you're raising the level of your home budget. And if you don't have money to fill that in, then you're going to be, have a problem. And if your one-time funds were supposed to be for a new roof and you need a new roof, but you're spending them on the mortgage payment, you're going to have a leak. And in the simplest terms, that's what you have in your budget. You're using those emergency, those one-time, those special-use funds on your base operations. So the real opportunity and commitment is that as you look at your multi-year projections, you, we would highly recommend that you have a commitment to align your staffing with the enrollment. The state certainly recognizes, and this isn't the state that's hiring us, this is the governor and the legislature, that enrollment is declining in California. That's why, and we're not sure what the proposal will end up being, but it'll probably be a three-year average. But that three-year average still steps down at the, as it rolls over each year. So sooner or later, you're going to have to, I think, Ms. Gordon's words, the first time I heard her, were true up the staffing to the enrollment levels at the school. You have a new projection model that your, your, your school projection people are looking at, it's based on cohort survival. It should give you a better, accurate picture of what your enrollment's going to be over the next few years, and monitoring it in the fall will be critical. But there will be hard decisions that this board has to make in terms of aligning the staffing and, you know, just be very explicit about it. It's going to mean reducing staffing so that you have the money out of your base budgeting to pay for those staff.
Thank you. All right.